I'm going to call the meeting to order. This is the special town meeting for the town of Lunenburg, November sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. I declare that we have a quorum, which for your information is fifty people in our town. Uh, the warrant was properly served and it's been returned to the town clerk's office. At this time, I would ask you to stand, address the flag, and recite with me the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Great, please have a seat. I want to start by thanking all the volunteers that helped run this town, whether they're elected or appointed, who give all their time and their talent, especially their time, uh, to make this town such a wonderful place to live. And at this time, I'd like to call on a select board chairman, Mr. Tom Alonso, uh, for a few remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I just wanted to take the opportunity, as you can see, there's only four board members. A couple of weeks ago, we had a resignation, um, from Jim Marino, and Jim has moved out of town, and so by, you know, by charter, obviously, cannot serve anymore. I just want to take the opportunity to recognize him. I don't know if he's here or not, but, uh, Jim grew up here, born here, uh, and spent most of his forty-year police career here, rising through the ranks, uh, till eventually becoming chief, the last, uh, decade or so of his, uh, of his career. Uh, everybody, probably everybody in this room, or most everybody in this room, had some dealings with him. He was very visible in the community, uh, through the police and, and through his own, uh, as you could see from his, uh, election to the board after his retirement. And I just want to recognize him and all he's done for the town through the police department, and all the work he's done there, and then for his time, a short time on the board, only, uh, a little less than, uh, two years, but still an important part of his service to the town. And, uh, I hope everybody joins me and wishes him well in his new endeavors in, in places outside of Lunenburg. Thank you, Jim.
And obviously, we need more people to get involved. If you want to have some fun, you want to get to know more people in town, get involved, we'd love to have you. Uh, there are talent bank forms that are available on the website. And my friend Chris Menard down here on the Finance Committee, uh, hosts a Facebook page called the Lunenburg Town Elections and Appointments. And just if you go on the town website, or you go on that Facebook page, you'll see that there are openings on the Agricultural Preservation District Commission, the Economic Development Committee, uh, the Green Committee, uh, I think that was it. Um, but at any economic development, so please, think about joining, uh, any one of the committees. We would absolutely love to have you. Uh, this is an open public meeting, uh, so you should know that if we get to a point where the board had deferred their vote, uh, they will discuss their vote at their microphones, and then there will be a roll call. To be COVID compliant, and that had been up on the screen earlier, we're going to be voting by our cards. There'll be no yelling, thank you. I will call for the ayes and the nays, and you'll raise your card. I'll take account by my observations, I will announce the results. If you think I got it wrong, seven people can stand with their card. We will see that there are seven, and that means that they're doubting my assessment. And then we will have a hand count, and there are people that have volunteered because I twisted their arm to be the hand counters. When you come up to the microphone, you're going to say your name and your address. All comments should be directed at the microphones. There is no standing up and, and announcing anything, even if it's a point of order, which is a serious procedural question, just stand. Somebody will notice that you're standing, raise your card, uh, and we'll find out what the procedural issue may be. Um, if you want to amend something that has been proposed as an warrant article or moved as a warrant article, that must be done in writing. There are forms at each one of the microphones, unless it's something extremely simple, otherwise it should be in writing. Tonight, we're going to be, begin with five articles that are in the consent calendar. The consent calendar are some articles, and there are five of them, five, nine, ten, eleven, and twelve. Five, nine, ten, eleven, and twelve. Uh, they're considered to be, uh, by people that have gotten together at town meetings, um, relatively non-controversial, routine matters that can be voted on as one block that can expedite the business of this town meeting. Uh, if, when I call off the article, there's something that you disagree with and want to discuss, all you need to do is stand with your card, uh, and I'll know that we'll take that out of the consent calendar, and then we'll discuss it and/or debate it, uh, at the time that it comes up in its regular, uh, regular order. So we're going to begin with the consent calendar. Article five is, and I'm moving this consent calendar, just so you know. I assume there is a second to move the consent calendar, excellent. Um, so here are the five. Article five is to transfer from the Sewer Enterprise retained earnings a certain sum of money into the Capital Reserve Stabilization Fund. Article nine is to authorize the Select Board to acquire an easement on Lemester Shirley Road for maintenance and repair. Article ten, the Select Board to acquire a utility easement along Flat Hill for the replacement of a culvert. Article eleven, transfer property on New West Street from the Select Board to the Conservation Commission. And, uh, excuse me, that was Article twelve. Article eleven is adding a parcel, um, at one hundred Chestnut Street to the Sewer Service Map. I don't see any cards, so I'll declare that we're ready to vote. All those in favor of the consent calendar passing as one body, please raise your cards. Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. We'll now move on to Article one, Mr. Alonso.
I move that the town vote to transfer from the Sewer Enterprise Fund the sum of sixteen thousand, one hundred eighty-four dollars and thirty-one cents, raise and appropriate the sum of fifteen thousand, three hundred fifty-five dollars and sixty-nine cents, transfer from line number six, group health insurance, the sum of fifty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars, and to transfer from line number eighty, Monty Tech Assessment, the sum of twenty-one thousand, one hundred fifty-nine dollars, transfer to line, number fifteen, Medicare, the sum of thirty-nine thousand, nine hundred thirty-five dollars, transfer to line twenty-three, Town Accountant, four thousand, nine hundred twelve dollars, transfer to line number twenty-nine, Technology Director, the sum of sixty-five thousand, three hundred fifty-two dollars, for a total increase of thirty-one thousand, five hundred forty dollars in the amount raised and appropriated under the Article six, under Article six of the May first, two thousand and twenty-one annual town meeting.
Is there a second? Thank you. Uh, Selectmen, your recommendation?
Selectmen recommend approval.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Okay, this requires a two-thirds vote, tell us about it. Uh, Town Manager, I believe, is going to make the decision.
Yeah, I'll defer to the Town Manager, yep.
Yes, good evening, everyone. So this slide, which is also on page fifteen of your warrant booklet, shows all the budget adjustments that are being recommended tonight for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two. This article is typically an article in the fall special town meeting, and it's to make any necessary budget adjustments to the current fiscal year. Since the annual town meeting in May, the state finalized the state budget, which impacted the cherry sheet offset figure and state assessment on the expenditure side by a total increase of one hundred and twenty-two thousand, five hundred and fifty-one dollars, and reduced cherry sheet revenue by four thousand, one dollar. Also, our new growth figure is one hundred and forty-nine thousand, six hundred and sixty-four dollars, more than the estimate used at the annual town meeting. The budget adjustments that you are being asked to approve in this article include a reduction to our group health insurance in the amount of fifty-seven thousand, five hundred, an increase to the Medicare expense line of thirty-nine thousand, nine hundred and thirty-five dollars, an increase of four thousand, nine hundred and twelve dollars to the Town Accountant Department's budget, an increase of sixty-five thousand, three hundred and fifty-two dollars to the IT Department budget, and a reduction of twenty-one thousand, one hundred and fifty-nine dollars for the Monty Tech Assessment, for a total overall adjustment of thirty-one thousand, five hundred and forty dollars. The change to the Medicare expense line is to reflect the total projected expense for this budget as well as historical amount, uh, for this budget. The change to the Town Accountant Department's budget is to reflect a change in the position of the position, sorry, Principal Accounting Clerk to Assistant Town Accountant, and the cost for additional hours for this position. The increase to the Technology Department's budget is to reflect transitioning to outsourcing the IT Director position and the cost of certain software and infrastructure upgrades that have been identified as critical. We have applied for certain grants for the software and infrastructure upgrades, but are planning for them in the budget in the event we do not receive the grants. The Monty Tech Assessment reflects the recent vote by the Monty Tech School Committee to decrease assessments for their member communities. That's all I have, Mr. Moderator.
All set?
Yes.
Fantastic. Anybody who wants to ask any questions or make any comments is free to come to the microphone. Kathy's whispering in my ear, let's bow, she's ready to go home. Um, so I don't see anybody at the microphone, Kathy, so I think we'll vote. Uh, all those in favor of passing Article one, just raise your cards. Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Article two, paying our old expenses. Mr. Jeffries.
I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of, the sum of seven thousand, five hundred nineteen dollars and seventy cents for payment of the prior year expense.
Is there a second? Selectmen, your recommendation?
Selectmen recommend approval.
And Finance?
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Okay, this requires a nine-tenths vote at a special town meeting. Uh, Heather's available to ask any questions about why we should pay our old debts. All right, I don't see anybody coming to the mic, Kathy, so we're ready to vote. All those in favor, please signal by raising your card. Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Article three is, Mr. Franco, please, this is about the collective bargaining of the firefighters chief.
I move that the town vote to transfer from Article seven of the May first, two thousand and twenty-one annual town meeting, line number thirteen A slash salary reserve, the sum of thirty-nine thousand, nine hundred forty-four dollars and nine cents to fund the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three Lunenburg Professional Firefighters Collective Bargaining Agreement dated July first, two thousand and twenty-one, to June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three, with PFFM Local fifty-three fifty-eight A.
Thank you, is there a second? Second. Selectmen, your recommendation? Did you take one or you deferred?
We deferred.
You deferred, okay, so you're going to need to do a public vote. And the Finance Committee, same deal.
Finance Committee has recommended approval.
You recommended approval? Okay, all right, very good. Selectmen, if you could conduct your vote. Discussion and vote.
We can just go down, and anybody want to make a motion regarding the recommendation?
I move to recommend approval.
Second. And further discussion, all those in favor, Mr. Dwyer?
Aye.
Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffries?
Aye.
I for myself.
Okay, Select, Selectmen recommend approval. Uh, anyone want to discuss Article three at this point in time? I don't see anybody at the microphone, Kathy, so we're ready to vote. Kathy's watching that microphone. Okay, so all those in favor of Article three, please signal by raising your card. Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. Uh, okay, we're onto Article four, hey, we're making great progress here. Article four is about the Sewer Enterprise, Mr. Dwyer.
I move that the town vote to amend the amounts voted under Article eleven of the May first, two thousand and twenty-one annual town meeting as follows, to reduce the appropriation from Sewer Enterprise revenues by sixteen thousand, one hundred eighty-four dollars and thirty-one cents, and transfer from Sewer retained earnings an additional sum of ten thousand, eight hundred twenty-four dollars and thirty-one cents for an adjusted appropriation of one million, one hundred sixty-eight thousand, one hundred twenty-six dollars and ten cents to operate the Sewer Enterprise Fund for fiscal year twenty-two. And further, that an additional sum of sixteen thousand, one hundred eighty-four dollars and thirty-one cents be included in the appropriations from the General Fund for indirect costs and be allocated to the Sewer Enterprise Fund.
Right, is there a second, please? Thank you. Selectmen, your recommendation?
Select Board recommends approval.
Thank you, Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Okay. Town Manager is available to answer questions. I don't think this is why people came, maybe I have something else on their mind. Okay, I'll declare we're ready to vote. All those in favor, please signal by raising your card. All those opposed? Passes unanimously. Okay. And Article five was a part of the consent calendar. So now we're onto Article six. Now, maybe this is why everybody came. So you'll notice that Article six is about receiving reports, which we're going to do, and you'll notice that seven and eight are somewhat interrelated, although, although different. So here's how we've decided to, to handle this, uh, these three. Uh, I will move Article six, somebody will second it, and we will vote to hear the reports. Then we will hear the reports, uh, for seven, and reports for eight. And then there will be a general discussion about seven and eight, sort of together, um, so that it can be kind of free-flowing, you can have a conversation, you can go back and forth between the two, and get all the answers that you might have regarding either or both. At some point in time, I will decide that it seems like we've gotten fleshed out, everybody's got a chance to speak that has something new or unique to say, and I'll declare that at that point in time, I'm going to end the conversation, and I'm going to ask somebody from the Select Board to move seven. And then when we're done, we can debate seven, uh, and then when we're done debating seven, we will discuss and debate eight. When I declare that the conversation is over during that general period, I'm not cutting off your opportunity to discuss it and debate it at all. I'm just, at that point in time, going to focus it on seven, and then focus it on eight. So I will entertain a motion, uh, I will move that the town hear all of the interim reports from the TC Building Design Committee. Is there a second? Thank you. Okay, at this point in time, I'm going to ask, uh, the TC Passios Building Committee, Mr. Roy, to make the first presentation.
Good evening, everybody, my name is Greg Roy, um, I live at one oh five Chestnut Street, and, uh, I am serving as Chair of the TCP Building Design Committee. Appreciate your time this evening. When I gave this presentation last week, it took forty minutes, so I'm going to try to cut that down about thirty-nine and a half tonight. I'll try to be as brief as I can, because we do, we, we are interested to hear, um, discussion, as the moderator suggested. So, um, the committee's been around, uh, for, um, a little bit more than two years. Uh, we were, um, commissioned in, um, oops, excuse me. Sorry, I'm, I'm moving the, uh, mouse with my, uh, hand here, sorry. Care with me. Sorry about that. Uh, so we've been, we've been around, I hit the touchpad. We've been around for just over two years, um, you, you see on your screen, um, current members as well as past members. Um, and there's been quite a lot of work, uh, to date, and what I want to do this evening is give you an update, um, uh, as, give you an overview of what we've been up to for two years with a, an emphasis perhaps of the last six months since, uh, since the spring annual town meeting. So, um, two years ago, a little over two years ago, uh, we set out with the work of, um, seeking to come up with design development drawings for the, and a cost estimate for the renovation of the TC Passios Building for Town Hall, community uses, and school uses. So, um, that analysis commenced with a, um, with an overview of the building, present condition. We, our architects that were hired, um, had their specialists go through and give a complete, um, sort of figuratively speaking, tore the building apart, um, and took a look at all the systems, all the structural, um, components, the roof, the, uh, the building envelope and the like. We, as a committee, as well as the architects, conducted lots of interviews with stakeholders, uh, from around the community, um, school department, uh, department heads in town, um, and other groups, um, to determine, uh, what the program of the building would look like. That was done through multiple, um, public meetings, um, and, uh, a fairly lengthy process to really listen and learn what the town, um, what the town needs were, uh, for that space. That culminated in, um, uh, the realization that we had more need than we had space in the building, uh, to accommodate. So with the committee had to make some decisions, um, about the types of use, about the uses that would ultimately go into the building, and I'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute. Uh, thing, other things that went into that, uh, was a detailed discussion about interior building flow, adjacencies, how different uses would function, uh, relative to other uses in the building, um, how the exterior site plan would flow, um, and thinking about those types of, of, uh, metrics. Uh, the ultimate, um, output to that process was to prepare a cost estimate, uh, for, for that project. I'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute. So, um, the building, and again, this is the renovation of TCP, um, is divided up into, um, I'm going to call it four primary areas. You can see on the screen, there's a west wing, there's a central wing, and a north wing. And the area to the, on the southerly side, which is shown in white, um, is the area, um, that is currently, uh, where the, where the gym currently exists, as well as the cafeteria. Taking this one by one, and I'll try to be as quick as I can here. Um, the west wing, um, is designated primarily for town offices, so we have all of the office, the office suites that you have in both the Ritter and in the Town Hall building. Uh, the north wing, um, would be designated for school uses. Um, here we have both, um, before and after day programs with, uh, with, uh, to support those programs. We also have programs that happen during the day, such as the ACE program, and some other, uh, some other, uh, school uses that are, uh, that, that, uh, that are housed in that, would be housed in that section of the building. Um, in the central portion and in the southerly side, as I referenced on the screen, um, you have the, uh, is where the, what we're calling the community center uses were, uh, were, were primarily, uh, focused. We have several meeting rooms that we, we've identified, um, of all different sizes. Um, the current cafeteria on the right side of the screen, all the way to the right, uh, where you see the, the chairs in the, in the diagram. That would be, uh, repurposed as a, um, a large meeting room, which would take the place of the room that, um, that we use in town, on the upstairs of Town Hall, the Ballata Meeting Room. Uh, the gym would stay, uh, and function as a, a multi-purpose room, uh, for use as a gym, but also for other, other types of uses. And then, um, we also have the, um, Public Access Cable Department that would be located, uh, in that central wing as well, along with some other conference rooms and meeting rooms. Briefly, uh, the site plan, um, we looked at adding some parking. Uh, the area in green is what we, is what is proposed, what was proposed, is proposed to be, um, added to the, uh, site. So you can see that we've, um, that the, uh, the idea would be to create a circulation pattern all the way around the building with some additional parking at some of the other doors that exist around the building, and also to add some parking in the triangular, um, space that's in the front of, uh, of, of the building between TCP and the library, uh, building. So, when we, um, presented a cost estimate to the town meeting last, last April, um, we came up with a construction cost estimate, the architects came up with a construction cost estimate of eighteen and a half million. And when you add in soft costs, which are the things that you put inside the building, um, such as furnishings, uh, fixtures and equipment, uh, and you factor in costs for contingencies and, um, and other soft costs such as engineering and, and architectural services, uh, you came to a, amount of twenty-three million, rounding here, twenty-three five, which is what you have in your published, uh, warrant article this evening. And I want to talk a little bit more about this, but I'll give you a little bit of an advanced preview. Um, over the past few weeks, um, when we received the cost for the new build, which again, I'm going to talk about in a minute, it became apparent that the twenty-three million, five hundred thousand dollar estimate, um, that was given to us just, um, a little over six months ago, um, is no longer valid due to the climate that we are in, the construction climate that we are in, um, and the issues that we're seeing in the marketplace due to, uh, supply chain, um, type issues and labor shortages. So I'm going to talk a little bit more about this number, but the long and the short of it is the architectural team feels that the estimate that was provided to the town needs to be accelerated by approximately thirty percent. And so the numbers that are on the screen in front of you are the numbers that, um, that the architect believes, um, would be the cost for a renovation project today. Again, I'll talk a little bit more about that in a few minutes. So, um, an update pivoting a little bit here to the, um, the work that the committee's been doing in the last six months. Um, at the annual town meeting, uh, two thousand and twenty-one annual town meeting, the, uh, town meeting voted to authorize the expenditure of additional fifty-four thousand dollars to study and apples, to get, to get an apples-to-apples cost estimate for what it would cost if we were to demolish the existing TCP building and to, um, and to build a new building, uh, with the same programs that we had already, that the committee had already, uh, determined to be programmed into the renovation project. So again, uh, we contracted with the, the same architect that had performed the, uh, the, the previous assessment to do preliminary designs and cost estimates. Um, through that process, we, we worked with the architect, um, to, to, uh, iterate a few, uh, different concepts, again, with the idea that we wanted an apples-to-apples estimate. So we, uh, we were looking for the same uses that we had programmed into the renovation project into, to be put into a new building, uh, program, so that the town can see what the cost estimate would, uh, the cost comparison would be. Again, we looked at parking, and I'm going to show you some site plans in a minute. Uh, we, we reassessed parking to try and, uh, fit better with what a new building footprint would look like. And as it turned out, uh, with a new build, uh, you, you would have the benefit of, um, ability to expand it a little bit more easily in the future if the town, um, if the towns, uh, had that need in the future. The site plan, um, I apologize if this is a little difficult to see, but, um, the red dash line that you see on the plan, um, is the footprint of the existing TCP building. And the orange L-shaped, um, polygon, if you will, um, is the shape of the proposed building, um, that, that the committee, uh, came up with, or the architect came up with, uh, while working with the committee. Um, so you can see, we have this, and I'm going to talk a little more detail about the floor plan, but you can see we've, um, we were able to shrink the footprint by going to, uh, two floors on one portion of the building. Um, and the parking- And the parking was consolidated to, so that we didn't need so much parking around the back of the building. So, generally speaking, as I mentioned, the, the building is, is two floors. On the, the portion of the building along the bottom of your screen, sort of the wider portion of the building is two floors. The, the section that is highlighted in pink and outlined in yellow is, is one floor. And generally speaking, to the left, you have the town office wing with, with some town office space above it, and I'll go over that in a second. On the right, lower right in yellow, you have the community space with meeting rooms, multi-purpose room, a gym and the like. And the, the northerly space, which is highlighted in yellow, or circled in yellow, highlighted in pink, is the, is the school use space. And then, on the second floor, again, second floor being just the portion along the bottom of your screen, we have some more square footage for town offices. We have some, we have the school office space, as well as some additional meeting rooms on the second floor, excuse me, and, and also the room for the, the public access cable, which is shown in blue. And just a real briefly, I'll walk you through some of these, so you can see these in, these spaces in detail. On the first floor, on the left of your screen is the town hall wing on the first floor, and you can see there that we have the accounting and the, and the land use offices and the like. On the second floor, above the, above the clerk, above the green spaces on the first floor, is the, is a few more suites, town manager, I T, that, that would be housed, that could be housed on the, on the second floor. Across the hall from those, from the town manager suite, again, on the second floor, would be the school department offices. And then, on the first floor, on the northerly wing, would be the school uses that I mentioned before, before and after school programs, as well as some, during school hour programs for ACE and the, ACE program and, and the like. And then, the, the community space, which sort of is in the, the middle of those two wings on both floors, would have several meeting rooms of varying sizes. We would have a, one larger meeting room that would be set up like we use the Bellotta room in town hall currently, as well as a multi-purpose room that would function as a gym, as well as other, the ability to have other larger gatherings in that space as So, a few, a few things that we considered during the design. We, like the renovation project, we were really interested in security and how the access to both, to all the different uses of the building would flow. So, we, we have two main primary entrances, one for the school, sort of school, student side, and then an entrance, a primary entrance that would be used for, primarily for the community uses, as well as town hall and school department administrative offices. And there would be ability to shut interior doors and isolate different portions of the building for, say, town meeting, night town meetings, when you don't want to have other wings of the building open, you could just open the community, the community space. Again, the parking, we were able to consolidate the parking in, in closer to the school side, which we thought could help offset parking needs that currently exist in this building when there are large events, as well as support parking for athletic events that happen, say, on a Saturday, when you have lots of soccer games and things going on in the fields. The, the layout of the new build has the advantage of providing some green space in the back. We were able to sort of take back a little bit of, of building footprint because the existing T C P is on one floor, so we can do the same program in less, in less building footprint, so we have a little bit additional green space. The, the wing, the school use wing would have the benefit of being able to add a second floor in the future, in the, if the, if the town saw that they needed some additional space. And we looked and reviewed the idea of keeping the, the triangle in the middle, the, the space that's between T C P and the library open, so they could be used for concerts and the like. I do this plan. This is just a summary, and I know these numbers are going to flash before you a little bit quick, but if you focus on the bottom line, this is the major components in the building for program space, comparing the new build alternative with the renovated building alternative. Across each line item, you'll see a little bit of, a little bit of disparity, which happens just in virtue of the fact that in the renovated building, we're a little bit, we're constrained to the ultimate envelope of the building. When we had a new build, we had a little bit of leeway and could plan, could plan those spaces a little bit more efficiency, but, efficiently, but at the end of the day, you know, we're, we're trying, we, our task was to compare apples to apples, so we, we programmed that to be the same, by and large, the same square footage. So, this is a summary of where we are, and I, I wanted to talk really briefly about how this came to be. I, I gave you a preview a few minutes ago, but over the past six months, we, of course, have been doing what I just presented. We've been working with the architect to develop a, called a schematic design for the new build and to get a cost estimate. And a short few weeks ago, it's all blending into one, but a few, several weeks ago, we received the estimate from the, from the architect on the new build alternative, so that is to the right of your screen. And we were a bit sticker shocked at that cost. Hard construction cost is estimated to be about thirty-one million dollars, and when you add in soft costs, which are all the things that you put in the building, contingencies, engineering and architectural fees, construction-related items, you get a total cost estimate of thirty-nine million, thirty-nine point six million. At that point, we, we asked the architect what they thought of the twenty-three and a half million dollar estimate that we had published in the warrant for you to consider in Article VII this evening. And they actually put in some, they, they put in some, I think, weekend work for us to get us an update on the twenty-three and a half million dollar estimate, and, and in fact, told us that what they are seeing in the industry is a, approximately a thirty percent acceleration in construction cost in this calendar year. So, the twenty-eights on the left here, what you're seeing is, is an updated cost estimate for what, and the top number is the hard cost, twenty-two point six million, and again, I'm rounding, I apologize. With the cut, when you add in the, the soft costs, you get a total of almost twenty-nine million for a renovation project. And again, the, and I guess I wanted to be clear to everybody that the architect, the cost estimating team that the architect uses went out to the streets with this. So, they solicited costs from subcontractors, you know, so they, they have electrical contractors that they consulted that are actually seeing the costs in the industry currently today, and that's, that's how this estimate was generated, not just sort of a desktop level. It's a little bit more in depth than that. So, we have some real-time data, which none of us on the committee liked, and I'm sure you don't either, but we can be reasonably confident that, like it or not, that is what we are looking at for a, a construction cost if we were to renovate the building. And likewise, on the right-hand side, if we were to, to tear the building down and, and build new. So, your apples-to-apples cost is right there before you. It's approximately ten million dollars more to, to construct a new building on the same, on a similar, in the same location, on a different footprint, but on the, in the same So, this is just a summary, I think I've, I think I've spoken to this enough. This is just a summary of where we were earlier this year, prior to annual town meeting, and where we are now with the renovation cost, and why, and, and I think I've, I think I've addressed why we're, why we're there. I'm sure there may be questions. I think with that, I will...
You'll turn it back to me.
I will turn it back to you, Mr. Moderator.
Excellent.
And I think that...
So, at this point in time, now we're going to hear the presentation from Mr. Jeffries and his, that's Article VIII, the focus would be on Article VIII. When he's done, then we're going to open it up to general discussion. Ms. Lam Yu had begged me for a couple of minutes in between, so she could change her slides out to different presentations. Gives me a moment to tell you that a hundred and twenty-two people checked in, which is excellent. I'm very pleased that we had such a great turnout. Also gives me a chance to make a plug for Corinne Scouton, wherever she is, I know she's here somewhere. The Lions are having Meet Bingo at the Eastwood Club on Friday night, this Friday, at seven o'clock. You're all encouraged to come, play bingo, make some money. Now, the challenge is that I have to fill Dave Rogers shoes, he's always been the master of ceremonies. And if you've ever been in a ceremony with Dave Rogers, he's quite comical and fun. So, pray for me Friday night if you can't come. You all set, Mr. Jeffries?
We are.
Very good. Floor is yours.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Michael Ray Jeffries, Vice Chair of the Select Board. I live at eleven seventy Massachusetts Avenue. So, as Mr. Roy presented at the Spring Town Meeting in, in May, we were at a point where we had a price per square foot that was about forty dollars or so higher than what we would see in a typical office-type building. And so, that then triggered us, the members of the T C P Design Committee, that then triggered us to come to the town to say, hey, wait a minute, you know, let's, if we commit another fifty-four thousand dollars, we can investigate this further, and the expectation being that we would end up with a reduced cost. I think that what we weren't aware of at that time was that what we were seeing with that higher price per square foot was that it was indicative of market trends in response to, you know, just about everybody doing home improvements over the last year and the significant strain on the supply chain that we've had. And so, the Select Board, I will note here, that because the price that was advertised was twenty-three point five million and is now twenty-eight, and this article was intended to be an alternative, that if we do not proceed with a renovation, that we would then fund the design development of a new building. Again, those numbers have come back, this, it is, you will hear after these presentations, we get into these motions, the Select Board will move to pass over both Article VII and Article VIII. However, because they're in the warrant, we will proceed with the presentation. There will be some elements of this presentation that will be relevant to the previous, and again, some new information. So, again, this is Article VIII, Information Design Development of a New Town Hall and Community Center. So, this is the wording of that article. What it will do is commit three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars for that design. We'll just read it, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds, three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars for the design and engineering required to construct a new building, Lunenburg Town Hall and Community Center, that consolidates town offices, school uses and community space at the location of the building and land known as the T C Passios. So, what a yes vote will do is a yes vote will identify that the town wants to move forward with this new town hall and community center at the location currently occupied by the T C Passios building, and it will also commit those funds from free cash to complete the building design process in anticipation of a vote at the May two thousand twenty-two annual town meeting to construct a new town hall and community center. Now, during our presentation today, we've, we've heard certain phrases, so let's talk about this terminology that you've heard. What program space, when we say program space, we're talking about what the space is used for, definition being, you know, a set of activities with a particular long-term aim. When we say adjacencies, this is just what is next to what, by definition, what's closer near. And then, we talk about the schematic design phase and the design development phase. So, I know that you're all reading this, so I'll give you a moment here to read through this. Couple key things to point out is that a schematic design phase, you know, you end up with a bottom there as a, identify the feasibility of a project and prepare a diagram or depiction and its rough estimated cost, whereas this design development phase is advancing that schematic design by conducting more analysis of those major building systems and components, including foundation structures, electrical systems, plumbing, your HVAC systems, in order to prepare detailed floor plans, architectural renderings and a more exact estimated cost. So, this slide speaks to how we design projects here in the Commonwealth. So, in Massachusetts, all public projects go through this five-step process of schematic design, followed by design development, construction documents, bidding, value engineering and construction administration. So, real quick, value engineering is a process by which you're, you're working, once you have qualified bids, you're working with that contractor to look for ways to save money, whether that's, hey, maybe we can use a different boiler system, maybe we can implement, you know, different flooring material, maybe we can use this instead of that. And so, you're going through, it's called a V E process that reduces costs. Now, what the pie chart over here speaks to is how we identify these design and engineering costs. So, when we say, you know, when we commit funds for design and engineering, typically your design engineering costs are going to be about five to ten percent of that project's total cost, average is about eight percent. Now, that designer, that designing company, how they bill you out that money is they bill you in increments. And so, this pie graph depicts a typical schedule of payment from a design engineering company, that you're going to pay them twenty percent of that total money at, at the end of the schematic design phase, and then roughly another twenty percent at the end of the design development phase. So, it's common to commit about forty percent of those design and engineering funds for a project to that product before you get to that decision point. Typically, the decision point for feasibility is, you, you have one at the end of the schematic design phase, is this feasible, should we move forward, and then, do you want to build this? That usually happens at the end of the design development phase. So, this slide speaks to how town buildings are currently used. And so, at town hall, now, just, just to orient you to this slide, the green identifies a town use, the bluish-looking color identifies a school or educational type use, and the yellow identifies a community type use. So, when we look at the town hall, we see we're at one hundred percent capacity, we see the same for the Ritter Building, and at the T C Passios, we're identifying that about fifteen percent of the building is unusable, I'll get into that in follow-up slides, and that ninety-seven percent of the usable space is currently at capacity. Now, one thing to note about both the renovation project and also a new build project is that all of these uses are being consolidated into one location. However, there are, the only new uses are community uses. The only new addition in either of these plans is adding in more, more rooms for the community, but all of these uses will continue without any other addition. Now, when we talk about the condition, what I'm going to do in these next few slides is I'm going to review the conditions of some of our town buildings, and I want to just go into a little brief history here of how we got here. So, when we look at the condition of town hall, we're looking here at the basement of town hall. So, what you see on the left-hand side is our sewer line. We had a pretty major sewer line project several years back, however, our sewer line continues to back up. We've had multiple repairs. This is why we don't store anything in the building, it's an earthen floor, and we have basically plastic all over it. Now, what you're looking at on the right-hand side, so this is the area below kind of the stage of town hall, that portion, this is directly below that in the basement portion, this is also below where the accountant treasurer's office is at town hall. You're looking straight ahead at an elevator system that, that the mechanicals are in the basement. Also, as you look at this screen, you can notice that the building is somewhat leaning, and, and that was identified in a two thousand sixteen TAPPE study that noted that the building is going to, or will require structural stabilization in the future, and that's what this photo highlights. So, the next series of folder, photos identify what the supports look like for town hall. Now, we can see some of the... Now, we can see some of the significant cracking in these posts that are old logs. In this next photo, you'll see that one is, several of them actually aren't even touching the building anymore. They're not supporting anything. They're just there. We can see just generally the overall condition of our supports here in the basement of Town Hall, and, and we can see what our, our wiring here is like. This is the attic of Town Hall. So what you're looking at is not a nice starry night, you're looking at holes in the facade. This is some wood rot in the front of the building. This has, some of this has been re-supported by steel, but you can see the conditions of the wood in general. And then you're looking at a two-and-a-half-foot by two-and-a-half-foot wasp nest, which is located in the attic. Now, this nest, to be fair, is no longer active. However, I'm depicting this to demonstrate that this is a building that, while it's beautiful to drive by, when we speak to our staff, it is riddled by birds, and squirrels, and mice, and wasps. And again, where our taxpayer dollars are going out those holes when this building gets heated. So when we talk about, this next slide discusses town storage. So this is how we store records at the Ritter Building. So this is located in an office, similar to your attic that you'd access in your own home. However, these are planning records. So these are records that are routinely accessed during the week, during the month. And again, this is by staff. Most of them have been at Town for well over 20 years. Many of them are seniors, and this by no means complies with OSHA requirements of how you would access any of this. But this is how staff currently access storage. So again, we have no storage in Town Hall, and this is how storage is accessed in the Ritter Building. Now, most of our storage then happens at the TC Passios. And so this is, the photo on the left depicts your typical storage situation. The photo on the right, well, both photos depict your typical storage situation, more so the right one. The left is more the ideal. So when we look at the right photo, what you're looking at in the middle of that ceiling there is kind of some brown staining. It's because the roof is leaking. And so as we have storage, we're positioning it around these areas where this roof is leaking. And these next few slides just go into a little more detail about this identifying that it's all over the building where we have a leaking roof. Now, this photo depicts some flooring. Now, when we talk about unusable space, let's talk about it. So the entire TC Passios has asbestos tile flooring. Or another word for that is tile with asbestos-containing material. So asbestos poses a hazard to humans when it is disturbed. And as we know from commercials, it causes serious illnesses, and it's a public health hazard. So what you're looking at here is when it, when the roof, the leaking roof, that water falls into the floor, that floor then bubbles up, that room becomes unusable because it poses a health hazard to humans and other staff. And there are multiple rooms that are like this, and that's why about 15% of the building is currently unusable. So this again depicts, on the left, just what we're, what we're looking at over there with barrels in the hallways. Now, the photo on the right is where the, our staff lounge in the building. So this is where the superintendent and her, her, the administrative school, administrative support staff, this is where they have designated to go to take a break. Now, what you're looking at is you see stains all over the feeling, ceiling from the leaking roof. You notice a gentle dinginess in the room. You see an air handler right over that table that's designed for them. I'm, I think it's self-explanatory that this is not an ideal location. So what are the problems that we're trying to solve? And I'm going to walk through this. We're trying to solve this lack of adequate space, these inefficiencies that exist in daily operations due to multiple locations. The amount of time that's spent when staff walk across the street in the course of the day just to do their job rather than down a hallway. Work conditions for our municipal employees. The parking in confusion by those who live and seek to conduct business in town. I happened to be at the Ritter Building for about 45 minutes while I was there to take these photos. I think it was about three different residents and, and other members of the community who came in looking for directions. And as staff report, that happens constantly, that they, that they're spending a lot of time in the day just giving, giving residents and, and business owners directions. Again, our storage conditions and capacity for town records, and those minimal, minimal opportunities for the interdepartmental collaboration. Now, for the school department, what are the problems that we're trying to solve? There is a good relationship with school department, with the town municipal offices. We're trying to solve that decreased synergy that exists. Again, those working conditions. We have capped capacity for extended day. There's a variety of reasons for that that factor into that, but a portion of this is that we don't have the space for it. Storage conditions and capacity for school records, again, most, all town records, with the exception of planning records, and all school records are kept in the TC Passios. And then the inadequate electric supply. So this building was designed to be a school. It was not designed for today's age, where everyone has a computer that needs to be plugged in. So what you're finding is that the school staff office, they know, hey, if I plug in this air conditioner, we can't use the copy machine. If we plug this in, it's going to blow out this whole line going down the, down the row. So there's multiple electrical issues that are, that are happening that, that we're trying to resolve. And then this low roof, we do have reports of children getting on the roof because it's low, and that poses a risk to them as well as more harm to the, to the building. And what are the problems that we're trying to solve for our community? It's that lack of meeting space that can accommodate public participation. Right now, we have the second floor of Town Hall, we have, and two conference rooms in the Ritter Building, one of which can hold about 10 people, and the other one can hold about 15. Inability to broadcast all board and committee meetings, inability to offer disabled residents access to our primary public buildings through the front door. Now, according to the American with Disabilities Act, it is your civil right to be able to come in the front door regardless of your disability, and we are, we're not in compliance with that. We're also looking to resolve the aging TC Passios that requires millions of dollars, as we're aware of, in capital repairs to continue using. And I want to remind you that most of these uses that are, that are there are storage and children, that that's who's currently in this building. And then again, that lack of affordable access to a local commercial kitchen, which as we say, we're a farming community, this is a repeated concern and request from different members of our community. So what this plan will do is it will address, in addition to meeting all of those needs, it will also provide additional parking for school events. As we saw from those maps, parking will be concentrated in the area closest to this little, as, as you look at this photo, the bottom is a gravel pit. This would be where parking would be concentrated, as well as expanded where the existing parking is. Space for community meals, maintaining, excuse me. The, a new build will allow, give us the opportunity to have municipal space to account for future growth, which was one of those things with why one portion of the building was one floor, why there was a large electrical room on both floors to account for that future expansion. And then it continues to provide that central voting location for our residents, and those child support services, and a gym for youth by the Boys and Girls Club, and also the So what we will be able to do is maintain this nice idyllic hamlet of a town center and, and a village, and it will resolve these priority community and, community and municipal space needs. It will consolidate resources and improve collaboration. It best supports our community programs. Again, with a new build, it is a future-proof design that anticipates changes in the future. It's a multi-generational, generational space that invests in our community values. And it creates an opportunity to utilize the, his Town Hall and Ritter Building, creates an opportunity to better preserve these buildings and provide space for cultural and additional community needs. So this article seeks to use $350,000 from free cash. So what is free cash? There's a nice definition here. The bottom line is that free cash is unspent taxes that have already been collected. And as per the Division of Local Services, the Mass Department of Revenue, free cash should be restricted to paying one-time expenditures, which this is, funding capital projects, which this contributes towards, or replenishing other reserves. So while not common to utilize free cash during a special town meeting, it is certainly within the guidelines of what, what that free cash should be used for. Now, the right also depicts a history of free cash. So last year, we ended with a $2.66 million roughly surplus. That is money that was collected that was not spent. Now, surplus, I'm going to use that word kind of in common speak. It's not really the language that we use, but bottom line here is that it was a conservative budgeting year because of the pandemic. There were also costs that were incurred that were reimbursed by additional federal funds, and so ultimately, we ended the year with 2, $2.6 million more than what we appropriated funding for. Typically, free cash is used for, for capital-type repairs. And so as we look at our history here, I think, kudos to Heather, we certainly see the impact of our new town manager allocating more funding for this, so that way we can pay for other capital needs in the town. So this is the cost. We've been trying, now, this is why I comment and say to us in our almost 30-year history, we have never built a town hall. I'll say it again. We have never built a town hall. The town hall that we have was built in approximately the 1830s. It was moved to that location in the 1860s, and at that time, or shortly thereafter, it was razed and the first floor was added. But it was not intended to be a town hall. It was donated to the town for the purpose of being a town hall. So the result of us looking at a $28 million number in May and doing nothing, and this is what this graph depicts, is what the same building does over time. Now, there's a certain cost calculators that we employ. There's a construction cost index. You guys have all heard of the Consumer Price Index. This is similar, but it's usually about double CPI. The average is 4.4%. However, we use a 4% escalator here. And then on the right side, what I'm doing here is I'm not accounting for the 30% increase in the last, this year. However, what I'm trying to demonstrate is, in today's dollars, you know, the cost of everything goes up. If we were to build a new middle high school at the cost that we built it for, based on those models, it would cost the town about $4.5 million more. The town paid for 50% of that building, so that building is, would cost $9 million more dollars today to construct. And then also using that same formula for the public safety building, that we'd roughly, it would be double what we spent, when we spent it. How have we investigated solutions? From 2013 to 2017, we had a building reuse committee. Now, this committee investigated best uses for all town meetings, for, excuse me, for all town buildings. During this time, we also created a village district in the center of our town. This body did. And, and, and the intent was to create this kind of vibrant economic hub in the middle of town. Most of the articles that were presented to the town, as a result of the building reuse committee's work, were defeated by town meeting, and the overwhelming result was that all of these properties remain in Town's hands. One of the complications in, in being able to, you think about the amount of money we've already invested in getting these design funding, the difficulty is getting private interest to commit any of that money for leasing out a building that the town owns without the ability to negotiate in good faith with a body that can, that can sign a deal. And so the difficulty is you're not going to get someone to spend $350,000 on a product that may or may not be approved at town meeting. But they may do that if they were talking to three or five people instead. We all respect the will of the town. The town's will was clear. The town said, we're not going to do that. And so all decisions related to buildings requires us as a community to find consensus on. From 2016, we did a TAPPE study. This was an assessment of primary town buildings to say, what do we need to do with our, our buildings here? 2018, we used that information and, and had a VERTEX study, which was a more detailed assessment, visual but more detailed assessment of TC Passios and other town buildings. That all said, the TC Passios is, is your most economical way of consolidating these uses and prolonging them. And that then created the 2019. 2019 is a result of this, this body, an annual town meeting appropriated funding for, to look at the, that consolidation of town offices, school uses, and community uses. Now, in 2019, we also did a survey at special town meeting to identify what the potential uses were for 30 schools, 30 schools, or primary school, and this factors into this conversation. Now, during the, during the conversion over here, this slide is not perfect, so I'm trusting everything will pop up here. Okay. So at special town meeting two years ago, we asked all of you, what do we want to do on that property? It was a survey, and there were six options. So one option was to take the old primary school, convert it to being a town green. Another option was have it as a green space with, excuse me, have it as a parking lot with some smaller green space. Two variations of the same concept. We also said we want to turn that, take that building, build a new town hall, we want to tear it down, and, excuse me, tear it down, build a new town hall, renovate it to be a town hall. And we also asked about senior housing and small business building. So we asked you what you wanted. Your first preference was town green or a lot with green space. When we looked at your second preference, your second preference was town green or, or a lot with green space, 53%. Now, we also asked what your sixth preference was, you know, again, you were ranking everything here. All right. So we said what's your sixth preference? What's the thing you liked the least? 55% of you said Town Hall. And so with this information, we've kind of moved forward and trying to figure out a plan for what we can do with all of our properties. And the intent being that spring, next spring, that the Select Board will have articles to move forward with the Town Hall and Community Center, with the expectation that that will be completed 2024 to 2025. Also, in the spring, that there will be an article from the Select Board to move forward at the old primary lot with building a town green and providing additional parking. And then also, that also will be the opportunity then to create and establish this historic Town Hall and Ritter Building Committee to identify these best uses, to preserve these historic structures, and enhance the cultural and economic interests of our community, with the expectation that those new uses would be implemented in 2025. So again, this is the article, and if we, I think we have a slide hidden, but if, if we, if the, if the movement to pass the article does not succeed, and we actually get to the point of voting on this, there will be an amendment to strike the words, raise and appropriate, to make it clear that we're not looking to raise any money, this is simply about transferring free cash. Thank you.
Thank you. If both of you gentlemen would stick around. So as I said earlier, and Mr. Jeffries kind of tipped his hand a little bit, that the selectmen may move or will move to pass over these two articles. Nonetheless, they're on the warrant, so something has to be decided by this body. You can decide to pass it over. You can decide you don't want to pass it over and you want to defeat it, or you can decide you don't want to pass it over and you want to pass it. So that is obviously up to you. The idea had been that at this point in time, you've come, they were before you, you had thoughts about it, maybe questions about it, so this is your chance to ask some questions, even if they're going to pass over, even if it does pass over. And I know Mr. Beardmore previewed for me that he wants to ask a question.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I will have some comments, but before that, I would like to suggest that we bring forth the town accountant to give us a brief overview of what the effects of these articles may have on both property taxes, as well as our town's fiscal policy with respect to excludable debt service.
You've got more power than me, because usually she hides in the back and doesn't want to come out unless we beg, so you ask and she's coming.
The town manager and I inspired before the meeting.
Yeah. Ms. Broschew. Introduce yourself, Karen.
My name is Karen Broschew. I'm the Finance Director and Town Accountant for the town. Good evening, everybody. I would refer you to the handout that you received when you came in this evening. It's the one that has the consent calendar, and it has a couple of spreadsheets showing the estimated debt service for, for both the TCP renovation and new build, and it also includes an estimate for a project that would be done at the Turkey Hill Elementary School in 2031. As far as the renovation project goes, the TC Passios renovation cost, as was discussed in the, in the presentation, is $28,967,640. The impact to the tax rate ranges from a lower four cents in the first year to an average of about a dollar a year for about 28 years, and then it drops down to 50 cents. That translates into, based upon the town of Lunenburg's average single-family home value, the annual cost for that project would range from a, about $343 a year, down to $177. $177 in the final year of that debt. And again, this is based on a 30-year bond. For the Turkey Hill Elementary School, the dollar amount of that project that we estimated was $22,530,000. And that project would start in 2031 and again be a 30-year bond. The impact on the tax rate would be just under a dollar for several of those years. And for the average single-family home value of 351, 358, the cost would range from roughly $259 in the first year that we start paying off the debt and would drop down to about $206 in the final year of the debt service. For the, let's see here. Which one? Did I just do that? For the new construction, the only difference in the debt service would be for the actual new construction of the, of the building on the TC Passios site. That cost is $39,647,229. The impact on the tax rate would be about a dollar 30 for most of the years of that 30-year bond. And again, for the single-family, average single-family home value, it would range from a low of $225 in the first year of the debt service payments. And it would go as high as $467 for most of the years outgoing and would finally drop to 242 in the final year. The past, the Turkey Hill Elementary School project, the, the numbers would be the same as the estimates were, the same for both of those scenarios. And then the only other thing that I would say about this is that there are several years within the debt service that we would be in violation of our own financial policy. We have a policy in place that basically says that our excludable debt will not exceed 11% of our levy. And there are several years for both the renovation project and the new construction project that we exceed those estimates. And I would think if we, if that is the case, when we went out to bond for those projects and had to get a bond rating, it would affect the interest that we would pay on those projects.
Excellent. Don't go too far, Karen. If people are going to have questions, you can line up over there where all the other questioners are, if you want. Mr. Beardmore, go ahead, follow up.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. First, I want to thank and commend Mr. Roy and Mr. Jeffries and the TC Passios Renovation Committee. This committee has worked doggedly through a pandemic to deliver on their charge. And we all owe them a gratitude for their work thus far. In my role as chairman of the finance committee, I'd like to report to you, since we are covering content in Article Six relating to Articles Seven and Eight, that the finance committee has recommended disapproval of Article Seven by a six-to-one majority and recommended disapproval of Article Eight unanimously. Speaking for myself, I've followed this process closely since its inception. And I, like many of you, have been repeatedly disappointed when the numbers have come in substantially higher than what I think most of us had in mind when we voted to begin this process in May of 2019. What we thought should be a frugal solution to help us solve some of the issues that Mr. Jeffries outlined has turned out to be disappointing. But I submit to you that part of the problem that we're facing today has to do with the charge from the select board that came to the committee, which was a plan to renovate and address needs. Again, that's exactly what the committee did, but never were guardrails for cost considerations put in place. Furthermore, after the first cost came in last May, somewhere along the line, we took a leap from an apples-to-apples cost comparison to a schematic design for an alternative project. Now, today, we have costs that are roughly 30 and 70% higher than what we thought we were looking at only six months ago. And yet, there are some members of the community that have expressed opinions that we should plow ahead on one of these paths, regardless of the cost. And I might add, regardless of any real plan or budget whatsoever, to address the buildings that we are abandoning. The problem is that while the building committee delivered on their charge, the work isn't done. The needs-up analysis has been done thoroughly. The cost-down analysis, or the what can we do with what we can afford analysis, has not been done. And in fact, the costs that were shared tonight were only made public two weeks ago tonight. The analysis on property tax impacts that you just heard from the town finance director only came out one week ago, along with the revelation, of course, that we're exceeding our fiscal policies. We have yet to receive any analysis from financial consultants on the effects those decisions might have on our long-term credit rating, borrowing costs, and borrowing capacity. The select board hasn't looked at its fiscal policy in light of any of the information, and the finance committee hasn't sufficiently analyzed these issues. To put it simply, because the information came in so late, there hasn't been sufficient time, which is among the reasons why I think these articles should be passed over. But there's perhaps a bigger issue that I'd like town meeting voters to consider. And that's the question of, are we about to make ourselves house poor? You know the term. Like me, maybe you have been there. That situation, you find yourself overextended on real estate and you can't afford the other stuff you need because you have to pay your mortgage and taxes and take care of your property. And you may have seen on the news lately concerns about inflation. Now, as I've said in a few meetings recently, I'm not an economist, nor do I purport to be one, but let me just share a couple of pertinent anecdotes. First, we just voted to give a sizable raise to our firefighters, which we needed to do to stay competitive in the labor market. Secondly, just yesterday, Axios reported that there are 575,000 fewer educators today in the United States than there were in January of 2020. In Lunenburg, our single biggest cost in our budget is salaries, followed by health insurance. And these economic indicators strongly suggest that our carrying costs as employers are going to increase substantially more over the next three years than they did over the previous three years. And in Lunenburg, we don't have the luxury of just raising taxes whenever our costs increase. We need to cut, maybe make substantial cuts, or pass a proposition two-and-a-half override, something that hasn't happened in Lunenburg in three decades. Meanwhile, this federal money is going to dry up or expire. And if you think the state is going to bail us out, that's doubtful, too. Our Chapter 70 education aid money is keeping pace, is not keeping pace with our current cost increases, or inflation for that matter. Now imagine a scenario. We vote tonight to add 30 or 40 million dollars in debt, and people start seeing their taxes increase by $400 a year or even more. And they know that there's another bill to come in the form of a project to address Turkey Hill around the end of the decade. But then, sandwiched in the middle of that, we need to ask them for a Prop. Two-and-a-half override, just to maintain our current services. Having lived in Lunenburg for most of my five decades and having lived through serious budget crises in the 80s and early 2000s, I'm very concerned that we may be moving into a period like that again. And so for those reasons, I personally believe we need to take more time to figure out what we can afford, maybe six months, and how to address our needs as best we can within the confines of a reasonable budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Beardmore. Usually, part of my opening speeches, we don't need a lot of clapping, hoot and holler and all that kind of stuff. But yeah, all right. So, but this is your opportunity now, as Mr. Beardmore took the opportunity, to talk about the presentations. Then we're going to move to Seven and Eight. Maybe they'll be passed over, maybe they won't. I don't know just yet. But if you have questions, comments, thoughts, you want to share with the committee, with the select board, this is your time to rise up to the microphone and speak your piece. There we go. Yep, please. Just introduce yourself, tell us where you live, and speak nice and loud.
My name is Anthony Scullinbrini. I live at Five Valley Road. And unlike you who've lived here 50 years, I've lived here 17 months. And I love the town of Lunenburg. And I had some remarks, and I, and I'll say it now, I love town hall. Yet I understand the challenges associated with town hall because I am a civil engineer. I spent the better part of my professional career dealing with old buildings at a place called Wright Patterson Air Force Base. That's where Wilbur and Orville learned how to, how to fly. They first flew in North Carolina, and then they came back to this place called Dayton and learned how to fly. We had multiple old buildings at that place when I was the design and construction manager at Wright Patterson Air Force Base. It's a huge challenge. But I completely agree with the finance committee chair's remarks. And I'll stop with my remarks and just kind of address what he's talked about. It is about redefining needs and understanding how to manage the costs in the environment that we're in today. One of those charts had dates, 2013, 2016, 2019. But you know, one of the things that isn't on that chart is February of 2020, when this country and this world got flipped upside down by a thing called a pandemic. And it has dramatically affected how we do business. My daughter and my son-in-law live in Washington. They work for Microsoft. They work at headquarters in Redmond. In 2019, Microsoft announced a billion-dollar renovation project to tear down buildings, some which weren't even 10 years old, and redo them. And 2021, that project isn't moving forward as it was designed. Why? Because their employees haven't been on that campus for over a year, and they're not coming back for maybe another five or six more months. And that billion-dollar construction project isn't needed. I completely agree with you. We need to go back to the starting block, look at needs, figure out what costs. I applaud the work that the committee has done. They did meet their charge. It's tough being a volunteer to do something like this in the circumstances that we found ourselves. But we need to go back and decide as a community, what do we want to buy? Do we want to buy apples? Maybe we can't afford apples right now. Let's look and see what we really need in the way of space requirements. The last thing I'll say, I love that picture, that Mr. Jeffries, that you showed, that had the town hall in the background. I love that building. If we would move away from that building as the town hall, it's not going to look like that. This is my second annual meeting. I came here in May because I wanted to see what this process was like. And I'm fascinated by it because we have such a vigorous debate about issues that people find important. This community can't tear down that old primary school on the street that's just across the street from, from town hall. What kind of debate will this community have if it moves forward and that town hall sat empty and vacant? And I can guarantee you, from my experiences as an engineer involved in historic preservation, if the town of Lunenburg doesn't want to fix that building up, there's no arts group and no cultural group that's going to want to take that challenge on unless the town gives the money to do so. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Excellent. So I will, I will. So you know, we have the Talent Bank form up at town hall. It's on the website. We'll be looking for you. What's up, Joe? I'm in front of the camera? So you're getting my best side? Not getting anything. Stop standing in front of the camera. Okay. I'm going to let people speak, Mr. Jeffries. You guys made your presentation, and I want to hear from the town folks. So go ahead.
I'm Rebecca Lantry. I'm from 251 West Street, Lunenburg. I want to thank the finance committee. I loved that presentation. I thought it was excellent. And I understand all the work that I have sat on some of these committees, and I know the extra work that other people have done since I have left some of these committees. I have to say that for my personal love of the historical commission, that I concur with our formal gentleman here, that if you abandon the town hall, it will rot, just like the old primary school has rotted. Some of our problems has always been building maintenance. How can we show those pictures of the TC Passios that has been in our domain of public buildings and have done nothing to fill these leaks? This has been our bailiwick. It's been our problem all along. We just don't maintain what we have. And we don't see value in maintaining what we have. Some of what I understand are the problems is public records and storage of public records. Well, I come from a medical background. I'm a registered nurse. And I have watched public records, for your health records, be all consolidated, and now we're online. We need to look to the future as to where are we going with our public records. All of these could be digitalized. All of these could be accessed by our computers. And that's where we're going. It's not in building, buildings full of records. I can tell you that the old primary school, the old primary school F-30 school street is full of public records that were moved from the bottom and the leaking situation in the old town hall and just shoved in piles in looseness all over that floor space there. How is that maintaining a public record to keep for the future? So I understand the financial constraints that we are all under, but we need to think wisely, where does our money go and how does it maintain the things that we need and we want? Thank you.
Thank you. Come right down, young lady. You know, I got in trouble with calling people young lady one time, but I'm probably still going to continue doing it.
Thank you for calling me young lady.
You know, I, I think it's a compliment, but go ahead.
I'm Jacqueline Dwyer, 361 Malthus. I would really like to see this not get sidetracked into a conversation about what we're going to do with town hall because that's not what this conversation is about. It's about TC Passios. I understand we're talking about relocating some of the services. Nobody's trying to tear down the town hall tonight. Second of all, when we're looking at our space, I think we really need to define some of the spaces because I know like the aftercare and beforecare, before-school care, aren't run by this town. They aren't run by the school system. So I just think that we need to have a better definition of what building we're building for whom.
Thank you. Nothing else on your mind? Well, Mr. Jeffries wanted to have some, oh, Mr. Alonso, we'll let you speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'll be very brief. I just want to make sure, to reiterate, that the TCP Building Design Committee, I want to second what the chair of the finance committee said, they, they've done an excellent job, as have previous committees, the Building Reuse Committee back in 2013. And everybody has provided all the information up till now. And the TCP Building Design Committee for the past two years has delivered exactly what they've been asked to do at every step of the way and done it professionally and done thoroughly. So I want to at least acknowledge that first. To make sure none of that work, now we're working on eight years of work, goes to waste, my personal commitment is that I want to see a project that the town will support and go forward. And with the information that's before us today, with the economic climate that's before us today, with the last-minute information that has barely been discussed because it's only been available for two weeks, I don't think we're in that position. And that's why, as a member of the, the board, I will vote to pass over these articles because I think that the timing is not good. I think that the discussion has not been thrown off about what our real needs are. The assessment of a new build given to the, the building committee at the May town meeting was to provide exactly what they provided, an apples-to-apples, similar footprint as far as square footage. far as square footage. But now with the information before us, that it's gonna be more expensive, everybody's idea was it was gonna be less expensive to build new than renovate a 50 or 60-year-old building. Now that we see that that's not true, I think we need to look back and say, okay, what are the real needs that go into that building? Do we need to build something exactly the same size? There are cost savings to be made by reducing the footprint of that building and maybe not putting every single activity that is currently there back in there. And this is a discussion that we need to have. My commitment is that I'm looking to hopefully bring these forward again in May, when we'll have a better idea about economy, when we'll have a better idea about financial situations like inflation and the supply chain, and that we can look at other options until then. That's why I will vote to pass over this. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Mr. Jeffries, I'll get back to you. Young lady, is that okay, young lady? Good.
Whatever you like. Katie Adams, Peninsula Drive. I want a little bit more clarification, and I don't know from whom, on, if we pass over this, what is the next step? Not in a vague way, but in a specific way. For example, I think the TC Passios location is the worst possible location for a Town Hall. As a mother of four children that go to school, and what I see that as a campus, as they're walking to the Boys and Girls Club or the library, I couldn't think of a worse place to put a Town Hall. It's hard for me to arrive to that location at 2:20 to pick up my children at 2:30. And so if I was going to that same location for a building permit or anything, it's just a horrible space. My son runs to my car, throws his backpack in, grabs his after-school backpack to go to the Boys and Girls Club, and it's all happening with all this congestion. Why would a community put a Town Hall in the middle of all that? And so as we move forward, I think we really need to step back, like some previous speakers said, but identify if we even need a new Town Hall, especially under this, this new COVID lifestyle and people spending less time together, do we need some of these things? If Town Hall has structural problems, why don't we fix them? If the front door is hard to get into, at a meeting I ask, can we put a push-button door into Town Hall, so that it's easier to get through those cumbersome doors? How much does a new door cost? Less than this. Meeting space, it's hard to meet on the second floor, I agree. There's empty community collaborative rooms in a variety of buildings that are ADA compliant. I made a motion, can we meet in a safer, more ADA-compliant place next Tuesday night for free? No, it was nay. We have free options to most of these problems, do we need any of this? The answer may be no. So instead of just spinning the wheel and kicking the can, maybe we need to spend $2 million on Town Hall. That sounds pretty cheap with all this other stuff we're throwing around. So really, take a step back, identify a specific problem, and then solve it. So and then to say, pass over, we're just kicking a can I've been watching for five years, kick, 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 identify a problem and solve it. So I would rather just vote no on all of this, so we can vote yes on something good. So to me, pass over is just a spinning wheel we've been spinning for way too long.
Thank you.
Dave Blatt, Baldwin, on Goodrich Street. I'd just like to ask the Finance Committee, they brought in front of us, they talked about the Turkey Hill. Now, when the Turkey Hill renovation, those numbers were brought to you, how long ago was that, and were you looking at the same thing as we are looking at on the TCP Reuse Committee, of what the inflation would be and things of that sort? That's the first one, just a couple series of questions.
Good, if you can answer, Mr. Beardmore.
Excellent question, Mr. Blatt. About two years ago, myself and a couple of members of the Finance Committee formed an ad hoc committee to kind of look at our debt problem in general, and some of these building projects that were coming around. And one of the things that we sought to do was to come up with that number that, that you saw. And we did so with the assistance of the Superintendent of Schools and the Finance Director, Mr. Cassidy, and the, at the time, Facilities Director, Mr. Londa. And the calculation was done based on projects that had occurred in the previous three years in Massachusetts, school projects of elementary schools, and then the calculation was based, was an extrapolation of square footage and, and enrollment in the school. So that enrollment calculation is essentially based on what was the population of Turkey Hill two years ago, I believe it's relatively the same now, at a certain squip, dollar per square foot, and I apologize, I don't recall the specific number. And then we came up with a calculation assuming a 50% reimbursement from the Massachusetts School Building Authority. And then that, that remainder of that number is the number that's in the spreadsheet that you see, with a 4% annual escalator that we added, as Mr. Jeffries outlined, an average 4% cost of building adjustment, or I don't know the exact term that he used. What this does not calculate is that 30% spike that we've seen this year. So the numbers that reflect Turkey Hill are actually quite benign, I guess is the word I would use, relative to the costs that we're looking at at TC Passios, because we're not assuming that spike in costs that we're currently dealing with. If it were actually an apples-to-apples comparison, you would probably see another 20 to 30% on, on that number as well.
Okay, thank you. The other thing that, as part of the TC Passios Committee, one of the things that we learned quickly was how much school use there was. And the school use that we're, the understanding that we had from the Superintendent of Schools is those uses need to be provided by this town. So the after-school, the ACE program, all these things were a need. It wasn't a either-or, it wasn't a nice-to-have, but they had a need. So the question would be, is now, if we do nothing at all, did the, you know, what, what happened, if we, if we look at this thing and we scale this package down, the question was gonna be, what do you scale down? Because now, when you look at Turkey Hill, you would have to add those functions to Turkey Hill, which doesn't have the capabilities, doesn't have the size, that's why it's in TC Passios today. Now, the numbers you've also given us said to us that the state is gonna give 50%. Now, what we learned from doing the middle high school was that unless you have enough students, that the, that the state doesn't want to give 50% towards anything when it comes to schools. So we went through this democratic process. So I would look at that number and say, that number is way under what it should be. So I, I agree with you in that respect. But I feel like that I agree with the previous speakers in saying that, what does six months mean? What we found is in six months, costs went up. What we found in every time we talked about this, is that costs go up. What we found as a committee, and we, when we looked into this, is that costs have gone up. How long are you gonna wait to do something? Right now, if you look at Town Hall and you say it's a beautiful building, and I, I agree it's a very pretty building for a postcard and for it to make a majestic town, but as far as a useful building, it's lousy. It doesn't have enough room to hold all of Town Offices. We proved that to ourselves, how long ago did we do, we do Ritter? Five years ago? Seven years ago, we redid Ritter? We proved that that building, Town Hall, doesn't have enough room. And the fact that our town now functions, it's, that our town offices have the worst conditions out of any group in this town is utterly ridiculous. DPW has a nicer facility than Town Offices. Police and Fire, nicer facility than Town Offices. Parks and Recreation, nicer than Town Offices. Why is Town Offices the idea that they are the punching bag of this town? Give them the chance to have a place to be, to come together, it is not a group that you can do online only. It's a group where people still have to come, see people, there are people, and, and go to. We should do something now for this building, we should do something now for the town, we should do something now for the town to be proud of, and not keep kicking this and kicking this and kicking this down the road. I've only been in this town for 26 years now, and I've watched the same thing being happened over and over and over again. We keep talking about doing things, talking about doing things, until the, until we have no other choice, and to have to spend, you know, spend the money at its highest point because we kicked it down the road and kicked it down the road. We have an opportunity to do something nice, whatever you want to do, if you want to make a Town Hall only, if you want to make a School Offices only, if you want to do anything. All these things were seen as needs. We need to address those needs, we need to address them now, not a year, six months, not a year from now, not two years from now, not three years from now, address them now before it becomes too late and we keep putting lipstick on a pig, is what we, and keep spending more and more money to maintain buildings that we should have never been in in the first place. That's it.
Thank you. Yep, go ahead.
Yes, I just want to make it clear, in both projects, there are, is, included in both projects is 5,000 square feet for the Extended Day Program. This is a program we are not mandated by the state to have. So to ask me as a taxpayer to pay, let's see, what was it? $527 a square foot to renovate 5,000 square feet for this Extended Day Program in the renovation project, it would be two point, over $2.6 million for a space that we are not mandated nor required to have, and is not necessary when the school has more space than any other group in their own buildings. Or, or we could pay $720 a square foot in the new construction for the 5,000-square-foot Extended Day Program for over $3.6 million. So, if we go back, I'd like to go back to the slide that shows the new building and the space breakdown, and the renovation with the space breakdown, if we could.
Whose slide was that? Was that yours, Mr. Jeffries?
No.
It may have been Mr. Roy's.
It was.
That may be difficult, because they got the different.
Yeah.
Oh, here it is.
This is the one.
Great, good job.
Okay, so you're telling me, which I agree, we owe it to our employees, whether they're town employees or school department employees, to provide them with a decent office, okay? And we also are required by the state to keep records in storage. If we look at the amount of space for the Town Department in both projects, and you multiply that by either $527 a square foot or $720 a square foot, those are needs, okay? Everything else is extra, in my opinion. We are, we are required to provide offices and storage. Anything beyond that is debatable. At these numbers, I think there needs to be a lot of debate. I have no problem, I'm a reasonable person. If you would present me with a reasonable project that will improve the offices and the storage, I'd be willing to accept it. But I'm not gonna approve 3,000 square feet for PAC space, which is a, supposed to be a self-funded program. That would be a burden to the taxpayer of over $1.5 million in the renovation, and $2.1 million, over $2.1 million in the new building. So there's plenty of pork that we can cut out of these projects and make them more reasonable and solve the actual problems. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see anybody else at the microphone, so Mr. Jeffries, I'll give the floor back to you now.
Thank you. First, I agree with most of what's already been said. Speaking as, as a resident of our community, there's no way that we should be approving this kind of money for these uses, period. I mean, I don't, I don't, I hope there's not too many people here who think otherwise, because I think it's pretty clear that we shouldn't. You know, when we, but I do want to speak to the articles that are, the, the presentation we've had and a couple comments that we've, that we've heard tonight. So we did have a VERTEX study, we did have a TAPES study, and we did have estimates for what this renovation would cost. We did have that, when we started, when the TCP Committee was created. And that, and those estimates came in between 12 and 14 million. So, there was, there was an expectation that we were probably looking at a building project that would be under 15 million. And there was analysis of what 15 million would do to our debt schedule, and there was plenty of capacity, and there's, and, and it certainly is something that the town could reasonably afford to do. When we start talking about $23 million, jumping up to 29 in seven months, you can't move forward. You know, when you go into a building and you're talking about basically office space for $40 million, it's, it's hard for me as an individual to move forward. But I want to speak to, again, a couple comments that were said. So record storage, record storage that we have is required by law, there's nothing that we're keeping by op, by choice. That is how much we have to keep. And so I heard the comment that we can digitize, we do. We digitize records so that staff can easily access them. It does not take away from the need to physically keep copies of those records. We also have a responsibility to provide in-person services here in our, in our town and in the Commonwealth. And so the option of going to an all-virtual Town Hall, like many of us have done in the last year, as a permanent thing just is not there. And then, you know, we talk about cost, right? We're, we're, we're all here, we all know, as Mr. Beardmore pointed out, that we can't increase our revenue by more than 2.5% a year. I don't know if we need to do that every year, but, but I understand that there's an argument that's made that it's not enough money. Now, when you look at your own finances, would you stay at your job if they were only giving you a 2.5% increase for 30 years? The answer is no. So there's a certain level, I want to speak as, as one of your elected leaders for a moment here and say, we have to be reasonable. We can't work a job where we're getting 5% raises, go somewhere else, get a 10% raise, and then expect your government, which is an entity, to operate on 2.5% every year. We have to make our best effort, and I think 30 years of 2.5% increases is great for our community. The reality is that as we go forward, there are going to be years where we're gonna have to spend more money. You know, how many people here did not do a home improvement project in the last year and a half? Or some kind of garden project? All of this adds strain into the system, it adds strain into all of our costs. When we look at five years out, all of our debt in five years will be for schools. About 60% of our budget is for school educational costs, and it will be closer to 65 if you start factoring in the cost for retirees and all those benefits. We have to do more than just educate children, that we have seniors, we, we commit a quarter of 1% to senior services, and we do nothing for people between the ages of 18 and 55 who do not have children in the school system. Our town has more needs. Now, I'm, I identify as a conservative, I don't, I don't like taxes going up, if you see our votes in our meeting, I tend to, tend to be pretty strong about my feelings about the role of government in people's lives. We ought to be doing, in my opinion, the bare bones minimum, but we're not doing it. We're not doing it. So, we have to do something. I'm not here because I want your taxes to go, I don't want my taxes to go up, but I have to be real with you, and say, we gotta do something here, that, that if we would have done this 20 years ago, we could have did it for $5 million. This is what happens when we can't find consensus. Our responsibility as members of this community, in my opinion, is to take these issues that are complex, and to say, you know what, I'm not gonna get 100% of what I want. I'm not. But I have to look at my neighbor and say, we got to get to an answer. Town meeting structure is not one where you can dig your heels in, it's one where we must bend for our fellow man to do the right thing for one another. So, many of us commit our time willingly to look into these, and I'm willing to give our town as much as we can. I'm committed to helping us resolve these problems. That's why, that's why I hope we can get that done while I'm here. But we have to do something. So, I, and urge us, as we get to this, to pass these articles over, but still, we still are gonna find ourselves in a situation where we still have to, this isn't the end of all of it. We're gonna have to do something. We're going to have to do something with town hall. The presentation that we went over tonight clearly outlined that that is the plan, and it's going to cost us money. We've got to do something with Ritter Building. Our problem is what we do with old schools. We have to stop building schools without having a plan for what to do with the old one. Because this is the situation that we're in, that we're using all the space that we have, and it's falling apart. And we don't have sprinklers at town hall. We don't have sprinklers at Ritter Building. We have asbestos sitting in classrooms right next to children. So whatever our feelings are about how this may impact our wallets, I think the situation requires us to rise above and say, we have to get something done. So we may pass these over tonight, but when we find ourselves in six months from now, we've got to do something. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jeffries. Mr. Roy, would you like a final word? No? It's all right. You don't have to. Go ahead. You put a lot of time in, you deserve to have, say your piece.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'll just say that I'm going to be standing up here raising my card when we vote to pass over, likely. And I'm, like Mr. Jeffries, speaking now as a resident, taking my TCP chair hat off, concur with the sentiments that started with Mr. Beardmore and were echoed by several others that, um, we need to pass over these and, uh, tonight, um, due to the just sheer magnitude of the cost increase that came two weeks ago. The committee wishes that we could have delivered on that cost, um, six or eight weeks ago, but it's just not the way it happened. So, um, given that tonight, um, as a, as chairman of the committee, and I think I speak on behalf of the committee, uh, we worked really hard, and I do appreciate the comments by several, uh, members of the town meeting this, this, uh, this evening. We worked very hard to deliver to this board, uh, to this, uh, meeting, the charge of our committee, and that was to present to you the cost of what it would, what it would take to renovate, uh, initially, to present to you the cost to renovate TCP. We did that, um, we presented the, the cost. None of us expected that it would need to be accelerated, uh, by 30%. Um, but that's where we find ourselves, and because of that, I'm going to be supporting, um, a passover of, uh, of both of these articles this evening, so.
Thank you, Mr. Roy. Appreciate it. Sir, come right up. Tell us your name and where you live.
My name is Ed Littlejohn. I live at 87 Old Farm Road. And I just have a question. Uh, let me preface it again by thanking the committees. I thought those presentations were outstanding, and I really love your comments. But we're talking about the 2.5%. I'm a little confused. From 2008 to this year, my taxes have gone up 47%. How does it do that at just 2.5% a year?
Go ahead, Mr. Beardmore. Your mic's off.
I'm not qualified to give you a thorough answer, but I can, I can tell you that in addition to the regular levy increase of 2.5%, which we regularly levy at that limit, we also have debt exclusions that go above and beyond that 2.5%, similar to what we would vote on tonight for Article VII. So over the course of the last 10 years, I can't remember what year we voted to build this building, uh, but we've taken on 30-odd million dollars in debt for this building. We took on about $4 million, I believe, to repave our roads and add to that, to that program. Both of, both of those projects sit outside of that 2.5% limit. And then, of course, every few years, your property gets reevaluated. And so it's not necessarily your individual property that's limited to 2.5%, but it's all of our properties collectively that is limited to 2.5%. So if your property value goes up more than my property value, or more likely, your property value goes up more than a commercial property, then you are going to pay more than that 2.5% as well. So I sympathize with you because I'm in the same boat, as are most of the people in this room. But you're absolutely right, that 2.5% levy limit is a bit of a misnomer if you think of it as a total tax bill, because it's not. It's actually about 2/3 of your tax bill to, to, to 3/4 of your tax.
Yeah, that was my point exactly, and that's what I expected the answer to be. But I wanted to be on the record that when we talk about 2.5%, we're actually talking about a much bigger impact on taxpayers, and that we do bear our fair share as much as we can. Uh, we voted for the new high school, we built the new, uh, police station, the library, you know, we're doing things, but let's not lose sight of the impact on the taxpayer, especially in these times.
Excellent. It's been wonderful that we've had some new voices and some new faces here. I'm thrilled. Sir?
Tanner Cole, 856 Massachusetts Ave. Just want clarification on what it means to pass over the article, because I feel like passing over the article is just kicking the can further down the road. And I don't want to speak for the entire body, but I feel like there's a portion of the audience tonight that would simply like to vote no and move forward in a direction that doesn't cost $40 million.
Okay. So, um, I, I hope I explained it before, but I'm going to explain it again. Passing over just means we're not going to take any action on the article. That's passing over, right?
Yeah.
Otherwise, people can say, no, I don't want to pass over, I want to take an action on the article. Then we're going to start a debate about, well, first, we're going to have a vote on whether or not to pass over. Assuming we vote to not pass over, then we're going to debate and/or vote on each of the articles. You can vote to approve the article, you can vote to disapprove the article, but that's kind of the process. So I fully expect, and I, I appreciate your question because it does get confusing, I fully expect that Mr. Franco is going to move on Article VII to pass over, okay? And the first thing that's going to happen is we're going to have to discuss whether or not to pass over.
So as a taxpayer and a resident, I think I share a feeling with many people in this room that says, we've been batting this thing around for many years, spending hundreds of thousands of dollars, and the thought of passing over things is just complicating the situation. This body can only vote on what's presented, and I've heard numerous people say tonight that the cost keeps going up, that we should have done something at last town meeting. There was nothing on the warrant last town meeting. The selectmen didn't put anything forward, the design committee didn't put anything forward, and here we are, 12 months later, cost went up 30%, and we're going to bat it around again. I feel like we're at a point where there needs to be clear communication from this body that tells the elected officials, this is the direction we want to go, so we don't go another six months and get to another town meeting and have a few more articles that may get kicked around again and again. That's all.
Okay. So that's going to be your presentation when we talk about passing over, so you can come back if you want. Okay, so I'm going to ask now, I think we're ready to end that part of the general discussion, and we're going to move on and focus on VII to start, and I'm going to call on Mr. Franco.
I move that the town vote to pass over Article VII.
And is there a second there? Okay. Selectmen, did you take a position on passing over? Or is that deferred?
We did our last meeting, unless one of the, unless my recollection is incorrect, we voted to pass over at the last meeting.
Okay. And Finance Committee, did you take a position on passing over?
The Finance Committee did not take a position on passing over, and I don't believe we will.
Okay, well, you're going to have to take that as a public vote, that you're not going to take a position, I guess.
Well, we actually did take a vote at a previous meeting and determined not to vote. There was, there was a motion made at our previous meeting to recommend passing over. That motion failed, and so here we are.
Okay. I think I understand that. All right. So now, what's before you is to vote on whether or not to pass over. So you may rise to the microphone to discuss whether or not to pass over, which is kind of where you were at, Mr. Cole. Anybody at the microphone that wants to talk about passing over? Go right, come right ahead, sir. Whether or not to pass over, that's the motion.
Russell Poria, 724 Massachusetts Ave. Um, I grew up in Lunenburg. I moved away for a brief time and came back, been back about 15 years now. And, um, I, my family has a long history in this town, and the long history of this town is that we push things off and push things off and push things off. And that's why we ended up with the mess, where we had to build a new library, a new police station, and two new schools within a very short period of time, and that's had a dramatic impact on everybody's taxes. So what I'm hearing from the body tonight is that there's not a lot of enthusiasm anywhere for either of these plans. So what I would propose as a suggestion would be that we defeat these and go back to the drawing board and come up with a plan to, to, that would take care of what the actual needs are. And it sounds to me like the actual needs are the town hall and the, um, um, the city offices, and not all the ancillary, um, items that, that we're trying to fit into this because we have the space. That's my suggestion.
Thank you. Go right ahead. Oh, you want to pass off to Ms. Hatch? Go right ahead.
She's ahead of me.
She is?
Yes.
Okay.
Carol Hatch, 41 Hilltop Lane. I agree with previous speakers who have said we have to do something, but I don't see that something being hammered out tonight. Therefore, I would support passing over.
Thank you. I think you're up now.
Okay. Katie Adams, Peninsula Drive. Um, I would suggest that we vote no on passing over so that we can actually visit the article. I've never seen so much discussion and emphasis since I've been involved on whether or not to pass over. I think what we should do since, I mean, I've seen meetings in May, annual town meetings with like 51 people at them, one over quorum. There's like 120-something people here tonight. Why are we afraid to see how they feel? Vote no on passing over and just see what the body says. That's the point of being here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else on passing over? Mr. Jeffries?
Yeah, I think the, the, the problem that we have tonight is that we have a bulletin that went out to every home in Lunenburg that said that this article was priced at $23.5 million. And I don't think it's reasonable to then, tonight, say, well, let's vote on something for $29 million. So that is, that's, for me, my main argument for a passover, is that we didn't, we didn't notify anyone outside of this room that there will be a vote tonight on anything other than $23.5 million. And so therefore, I don't think we should have the vote.
Thank you. So I think, I think we're ready to vote.
Wait.
Whoops, sorry, Mr. Alonso, didn't see.
Uh, to somebody in the, one of the previous speakers, uh, during the last discussion, said something that I thought was, was very pertinent, and it, it really kind of explains my position on wanting to pass over. When I got involved in town government in 2004-ish, 17 years, there hadn't been a building built in Lunenburg in 35 years. And lots of things were in disarray. We had public safety buildings that the public safety personnel didn't want to be in because it wasn't safe. That's how bad it was. We had a library that had, that for a town of, at the time, probably 9,500 people, had seven parking spaces. And we went over the last 17 years or so, and we built a new library, a new primary school, a new public safety building, uh, the new middle high school, we did an addition on the DPW. So I'm not against building things, and I'm not for kicking things down the road just to kick them down the road. But I like to bring projects that have public support and that are financially sound. The numbers that the finance director showed us on these projects make those two pieces impossible. I mean, they're not financially sound. If we're breaking our own policies, they're not financially sound. And I think there's room, without having to defeat the articles, to go back and sharpen pencils and redefine for a new bill what that is, without having to defeat these articles. Passing over them doesn't do anything except give us more time. And I know people want things to go fast, but government is, is intended to go slow so we get to the right solution. And I think this is the right solution, to pass this article and the next article over. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I think we're ready to vote. What we're voting on now is whether or not to pass over. If you pass over, we're just going to go to eight. If you vote to not pass over, then we're going to discuss and vote on Article VII. So raise your hand if you're in favor of passing over. Raise your card, rather. It needs to be a majority vote. Okay, and raise your card if you're opposed to passing over. And I declare that we have, have voted to pass over. And I don't see seven people challenging it, so we have passed over Article VII. Moving on to Article VIII, Mr. Alonso.
I move that the town vote to pass over Article VIII.
Is there a second? Thank you. Selectmen, what was your vote on this, passing over?
We recommended passing over.
Thank you. Finance, did you take a position on this one?
Finance Committee does not have a position on passing over.
No position on passing over. Okay. Same issue. Do you want to pass over is the first issue. Don't see anybody at the microphone. All those in favor of passing over Article VIII and moving on, raise your card. Okay? And all those opposed to passing over, raise your card. Again, it's a majority vote, the majority rules, and we have passed over Article VIII. Article IX and X were both in the consent calendar. Article XI was in the consent, XII was in the consent. So we are on to the Salary Administration Plan, Article XIII. And I believe that is Mr. Alonso, please.
I move that the town vote to amend Chapter 70 of the town's general bylaws entitled Salary Administration Plan, Schedule A, as follows. The position of seasonal cemetery laborer to be added and assigned to Grade V. The position of alternate building commissioner to be added and assigned to Grade XVI. And that the class title of PAC production assistant to be changed to PAC production technician.
Is there a second?
Second.
Selectmen, your recommendation?
Recommend approval.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Anyone want to discuss, debate, ask questions about the Salary Administration I don't see anyone at the microphone. I declare we're ready to vote. All those in favor of Article XIII, please signal by raising your card. Anyone opposed? Passes. Article XIV, Demolition Delay. Mr. Jeffries?
I move that the town vote, uh, to amend the Code of Lunenburg, Chapter 134, entitled Demolition Delay, subsection 4-D and 5, as written in a special town meeting warrant booklet.
Is there a second?
Second.
Selectmen, your recommendation?
Selectmen, deferred.
Deferred, thank you. Finance Committee?
Finance Committee finds no financial impact.
Okay. Selectmen, you're going to have to caucus and publicly debate it, but do I understand that there is a, a motion right now on this article? Please, Mr. Alonso.
There is, Mr. Moderator. I move to amend Article XIV by adding to the Demo, Demolition Delay Bylaw, Chapter 134, Section 4, Subsection D, 1, after the statement, quote, "Evidence shall include," comma, quote, the phrase, quote, "at least one, but in the discretion of the Historical Commission, more than one," comma, "of the following," colon, unquote.
Is there a second to the amendment? Is there a second to your motion to amend?
There is.
I did hear a second. My hearing sometimes is poor. Okay, so let's see if we can focus this. Mr. Alonso, tell us about why we should amend it from the original article.
The amendment just clarifies the language that the, the four sections that are given in, in, uh, subsection D, 1, that it-
subsection D one, that it makes it clear that at least one of them has to be met, not all of them, but the Historical Commission has the ability to require more than one. It just clarifies those, that list of requirements.
Okay. Anyone want to discuss, debate, ask questions about the amendment? Oh, I saw you, Mr. McGrath, about the amendment. Mr. Jeffries.
I do. So when we look at, I don't know if everyone has the article actually in front of them, but when we look at Article fourteen as presented, so what this will do to the demolition plan review is, bottom line, it says that, this, bottom line what this says is that, number one, there's a bona fide, reasonable attempts have been made to sell, preserve, move, rehabilitate, or restore said building or structure. Evidence shall include. Now, so what this will do is it creates a bimonthly reporting requirement, and it says, hey, every other month, you need to submit a report back to the APDC, and you need to have, according to this amendment, one of these options. A listing of the building with a licensed real estate broker, two, or an estimated of rehabilitation or restoration cost of the building or structure, or an estimate for moving the building or structure in its present condition, or the name, address, and contact information of a party or parties that have been located who have agreed to preserve, rehabilitate, restore, or relocate the building or structure. So what this amendment will do is it will clarify that one of these things, not all four of these things, are required. Now, if we think that we have town buildings that are in this district, which we do, I want to think now if the APDC requires more than one of these to apply. Does the select board have the ability to list a building with a licensed real estate broker? The answer to that is no. Number two, an estimate of the, do we have the ability to estimate the rehabilitation or restoration cost of a building or structure? Without an appropriation, the answer to that is no. Number three, can a select board create an estimate for moving the building or structure to its present condition? Yes, we can. And number four, can we provide the name, address, and contact information of party or parties that have been located who have agreed to preserve, rehabilitate, restore, or relocate the building? That is also not within our ability to do. So we can't comply with our own buildings with this bylaw as amended, and the amendment that is presented doesn't do enough to protect our town in saying we can't comply with these requirements because we can't. So I would prefer that the language that states that, "but in the discretion of the Historical Commission, more than one," for either that to be changed or for there to be an additional amendment that exempts the town from these applying.
Are you making a motion to amend the amendment? And if you are, it needs to be in writing.
Then I will submit it in writing.
Okay. So let me get your form. There you go. So it's a motion in front of you on the article. Okay, well, excuse me, the article was moved. And there was a motion immediately to amend it, to change some language that Mr. Alonso put forward. Okay? Now, Mr. Jeffries is seeking to amend that amendment that Mr. Alonso put forward. That clear as mud?
Jeffries.
Good. Doing our best to keep things confusing. And Mr. Alonso could accept Mr. Jeffries' amendment, but he's not required.
Well, I can comment on it if the moderator-
Well, you're going to get a chance to comment on it before we lose everybody.
So my comment on the requested amendment is that the select board can't do that, but the town can do either of those, and that's what this is aimed for. They're town buildings, the select board acts in executive order in place of town votes. So there's no reason why what already is existing can't apply to the town. So I disagree with the premise, Mr. Jeffries' premise, that these can't apply to the town because the town doesn't have this authority. Of course, the town has the authority to list it with a broker. It has to be a town meeting vote to list something, to offer to sell it or something else. So it certainly can apply. So I think it's an unnecessary amendment.
Go ahead, Mr. Jeffries. It's your amendment. Go ahead.
How do you require the town to do that when the town gets to vote and opt not to? How do you require the town meeting to comply with this? So in other words, if the APDC says, you got to submit this bimonthly report, we're not in compliance until there's another town meeting six months later, right? And then based on this language that prolongs the date, every single day that we don't provide this, it extends out the day of how long it takes to do this. So that's, it doesn't seem very functional then, whereas an average homeowner can comply.
We would have to have permission at some point to be doing this to begin with. So that would be the vote that would enable or provide the authority to the select board.
I, I think I will decline amending the amendment and just vote against Article fourteen.
Okay, so you're not going to go forward on the amendment?
Correct.
All right, good. Did you have a point of, you're good now? Thank you, Mr. Jeffries. Excellent. So now what's before you is, first, Mr. Alonso's amendment, Ms. Lantry, okay? And then we're going to get to the article as well, okay? But first, on the amendment. Anybody on the amendment that Mr. Alonso put forward? No one? Okay. So if you're in favor of the amendment, please signal by raising your card. If you're opposed to the amendment, please signal by raising your card. And the majority rule, and the amendment is passed. Now the article is before you, Ms. Lantry.
Rebecca Lantry, two-five-one West Street. Having written this article, not presently, but in the past, I can understand why these changes have been brought forward. And I don't agree with the town not being able to comply, which I believe it's been clarified, because you have sold buildings in the past, and you have been able to list with a real estate agent. I'm talking about the Jones House, and we did put historical stipulations on how it would be reconditioned in that sale. And so I believe that you can act as, with a real estate agent, and the town has done so in the past. I can understand why they've asked for the specific listings of these things, because without the specific listings, in demolitions that have gone by in the past, we have not had licensed real estate brokers when people have listed, when they have tried to comply with the demolition, which says that in order to do this, you need to list with a real estate agent. So they found some fly-by-night, some little sign that they made up, and they put it in a snowbank, and of course, it was a white sign, so that nobody knew the building was for sale, and therefore, six months just drifted on by, and another historic property bit the dust, okay? An estimate of rehabilitation or cost. And we want them to consider what goes into a historic building, what it is that they're going to have to restore, so that if they're going to put that forward in a sale, they can present that to somebody so that they would be able to understand what's going on. An estimating of moving the building, that means they've actually contacted somebody to find out what would it cost to do this, because although we've offered that as a thing, they don't do anything. They sit there on the building for six months in the past, and they have done nothing. That is also why the amount of time that has gone into having a building not be demolished has increased in our past articles, okay? And then the name and address and contact person. This has been vital because in the past, we've had, oh, the builder. No, not the owner, the builder. And they don't, they show up at other commissions to ask for other pieces of this building project when they don't even have approval from us to move over. They know that for six months, they're not going to be able to do anything, and they haven't, they're still going on to other commissions to line up all the ducks to be able to continue on as if this historic building doesn't exist and it's all going to be mowed down. So all of these things have a history as to why they were put in place to try and protect our historic buildings. We don't want people to even consider buying a project, buying a property, if their only condition is that they want to mow it down and get to a large lot that sits up behind it to be able to develop it, you know? We want them to sit there and say, we are the record keepers of these historic houses that if you travel around the rest of this country, their history starts in the eighteen-hundreds, late eighteen-hundreds. It doesn't start with ours back in the seventeen-hundreds. You know, we have an obligation to keep some of the history alive. That's all I'm saying.
Thank you. Come right up, sir.
Jim Levesque, thirty-three Lancaster Avenue. I think there's some confusion about what the demolition bylaw is. When we passed the Architectural Preservation District, the rights and the responsibilities for who owns the demolition delay was transferred from Historical Society, or Historical Commission, to the Architectural Preservation District Commission. So this article, as written, does not include those things under the jurisdiction of the APDC, which I think addresses what you were looking for. So that's a different bylaw. So if you want to address the APDC, we need to do that. I think as part of that confusion, I am going to move that we change the language that if a building or structure is not located in the APDC, our Architectural Preservation District, and is determined to have a significant building under this bylaw, so that it's clear that those properties that are under the jurisdiction of the Historical Commission are not those that are under the jurisdiction of the Architectural Preservation District Committee.
There's a form.
Yep.
You've got to pay.
I do.
There you go. So if you could write that out, and then I'm going to let the moving parties, the selectmen and Mr. Jeffries, speak to what you are addressing, and you're going to write it out, and then we're going to talk about voting on your amendment. Go ahead, Mr. Jeffries.
I want to speak to the general article, so I'll wait.
Okay, so you'll wait. I can't see. Mr. Beardmore.
I don't believe the motion has been seconded.
Well, that's a good question. I have it down, yeah, let me see. I put a check mark next to second. I put a deferred next to the selectmen. I take notes, and I have nothing from the finance committee-
I'm sorry, to clarify, Mr. Moderator, I'm sorry for interrupting. I meant the motion for the amendment.
Oh, the motion for the amendment, okay. Well, I'm not even sure what he said just yet. I want him to write it down, and then we'll see if it's got a second, okay?
Okay, fair enough.
May I speak generally while he's writing?
Say it again.
May I speak to the general article while he's preparing the amendment?
Well, let's give him a minute, because it gets confusing if people are discussing the article and somebody's discussing the amendment, and you need to take things in some sequential order. And it's only nine o'clock. I mean, I was expecting to be here till midnight, so, you know, it's only nine-thirty, Mr. Jeffries. Weren't you all planning on being here? I didn't see some pillows when they came in. In the future, if you have something you know you're going to do, which is what Mr. Alonso did, you know, feel free to have these things all written out, and I appreciate sometimes it comes up while you're sitting at the meeting and you realize it's an issue.
Mr. Moderator, in the interest of time, I'll just ask a question, perhaps through you to Town Council. Does the omission of specifying that these properties that are the subject of the article will lie outside of the Architectural Preservation District matter?
What do you think, Council? We haven't heard from you all night, so I'm thrilled that we finally got a chance.
You haven't, Mr. Moderator. So I'd like to see the amendment. I think I understand the gist of it. And I've got the language of the APDC bylaw before me, which has the cross-reference. So once I see the language of the amendment, I think I can probably-
So read it, Mr. Levesque.
Thank you.
Actually, give me a copy of it. You read it, but give me the carbon copy. You remember carbons? Interesting thing we used to do in the day.
Oh, you can read that. You get the, you get that.
Okay. Can you read it? Can you repeat what you said, Mr. Levesque?
All right. So I move to change the language for one thirty-four dash four D. If the building or structure is determined to be a significant building under this bylaw, adding the words, "and is not part of the Architectural Preservation District," then the building commissioner shall impose demolition delay and continue with as it is written.
Say it again.
If the building or structure is determined to be a significant building under this bylaw and is not part of the Architectural Preservation District, the building commissioner shall impose a demolition delay of five forty days and continuing. That clarifies that would not be part, that those buildings under the APD won't get confused as I think that happened.
So Council, it's on you at the moment. Mr. Beardmore has asked if it matters.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So I understand the substance of the amendment. So I have before me Section one thirteen of the town's general code, town bylaws, which is the APDC bylaw. And specifically in subsection twelve, further subsection B as in boy of that bylaw, the following sentence appears. By exercise of this bylaw, the APDC assumes the authority of the Lunenburg Historical Commission pursuant to Chapter one thirty-four, demolition delay of these general bylaws, relative to the proposed demolition, including demolition by neglect, of buildings that are over seventy-five years of age and located within the APD. So I appreciate, I think, what the previous speaker's amendment is attempting to do by changing the substance of that first sentence in Section one thirty-four dash four, which is printed in the warrant, to specifically say if the building or structure is determined to be a significant building under this bylaw, comma, and is not part of the Architectural Preservation District or the APD, the intent being that you are exerting or removing from the provisions of this demolition delay bylaw, those properties in the APD. I don't know that you want to do that. The properties in the APD are still within Historical Commission jurisdiction. It's simply that that jurisdiction shifts under the APDC bylaw to the APDC per that sentence that I just read. So all the APDC bylaw says is, if the Historical Commission would typically have authority to impose a demolition delay on a property, and that property happens to lie within the APD, that authority shifts to the APDC. I think you would still want that to occur even when these revisions are made to the bylaw that are proposed as part of Article fourteen.
And I got to tell you, Mrs. Lantry's behind you shaking her head, it's going to fall right off.
Well, there's certainly an argument that can be made to do, that does make sense. But to clarify what seemed like the confusion, I thought that made sense to add that language. But thank you.
And through you, Mr. Moderator, my concern would be that if this amendment were to pass and to excerpt from, or accept from this bylaw, the properties within the APD, then you would have no demolition delay applicable within the APD. You don't want that to occur. You simply want the APDC to have the authority, and regardless of what you do to the demolition delay bylaw, under the APDC bylaw, that authority automatically shifts to the APDC.
Given that, Mr. Moderator, I'll withdraw the motion.
That'll help.
Thank you.
Okay. So now we're back to the article as amended. Let's get back to my notes here. Selectmen, I don't have your vote on this. I believe you deferred. On the article as amended, please.
Yes, we have not taken a vote here.
Well, it'd be nice if you did.
But I think Mr. Jeffries would like to speak first. I don't know if he wants to speak before our vote or not.
All right. Well, he can speak as you take your vote. He can speak to it as you're debating it, I suppose.
Well, we can, we can take our vote, and then he can speak if that, Mr. Moderator.
If he needs to.
All right. So I would entertain a motion on the article-
As amended.
As amended.
I move to recommend approval of the article as amended.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call vote. Mr. Dwyer.
Aye.
Mr. Franco.
Aye.
Mr. Jeffries.
No.
And an aye from me.
Okay. So that's your recommendation, three to one. And Mr. Jeffries, do you wish to speak to the article now? to speak to the article now?
Please.
Go right ahead.
I'd like to just present a scenario. Scenario being a real one. The select board has submitted an article to tear down, to demolish the old, has submitted a request to the Architectural Preservation District to tear down the old primary school. Now, under this bylaw, and this is where I think it gets a little confusing, the APDC could turn around and say, "All right, every two months, we need a report." And so 60 days has gone by. We are looking forward to have you listed this building with a licensed real estate broker. And we say, "We can't do that. Town meeting has to do that." So they say, "Well, you're not in compliance, then, with the bylaw, so your request has to wait." So 60 days. Now, the way this bylaw is written is it has to happen basically in a year and a half. So it's 540 days. It's how long from the time you submit the request to the time that it is, that there's a delay before approval. So if this passes, at 60 days, the clock stops, and then we wait for the next town meeting. And if the town says no, that we're not going to list this building with the licensed real estate broker, there's nothing in here that forces them to say, "We don't have the ability to comply." And so then what happens? The answer's not clear. So we can't pass this bylaw. But let's say they require more than that. Let's say they require us to get an estimate for rehabilitating and restoring the building or its structure. And we say, "We can't do that." So then the clock stops again, and we wait six months for town meeting. So by our own bylaw, this will create a process, prolong a process, to hit 540 days. If every 60 days, you're getting a six-month, four-month stop, that's years. That's like a decade or more. So we shouldn't pass legislation that clearly doesn't make sense in all circumstances. And so I don't like government having different rules than everyone else, but we don't have an exception here. So I'm not, I can't support Article 14. But I do agree with the intent of the article. I do agree that if someone comes up for you to tear down a building, that it shouldn't be that they can just wait it out for a year and a half. But at the same time, I think everyone has to also think, what if the APDC decides that the structure has some value, and now you have to, as a resident, comply with this? I mean, you're trying to tear a building down, but you've got to invest money in trying to sell it, or rehabilitate it, or get it moved. I don't like that. I think it's a little bit of overreach personally from a government, so I can't support it for that reason either.
Thank you. Mr. McGrath, I knew you were going to come down to talk to us.
Yeah, it's my job. Richard McGrath, 22 Cushing Lane, chairman of the Historical Commission, who proposed this amendment. I had no idea that the APDC was going to be involved in this at all. I'd like an opinion from Town Council, to my knowledge and understanding of the general rules and regulations of the APDC, that the APDC has discretion, if there's going to be a demolition, that the APDC votes yea or nay, and that's the end of the process. It doesn't go to demo delay. We don't use that. The appeal goes to the court system.
Oh, Mr. Coste, you're up again.
So, Mr. Moderator, through you. I'm not sure that I understand the question that's being asked, so maybe the previous speaker could repeat the specific question.
When there's a demolition application in the APD, the APDC receives it and has a hearing, and then we vote yes, they can tear the house down or the building, or no, they can't. It has historical value. And that's the end of the process. They can appeal to
Lawyers bill by time. That's why we spend so much time, and you have to wait, you know?
Yeah.
Well, I don't know. I think everybody knows that, yeah. It's okay. Sometimes it takes a minute. Say it again.
I believe that to be correct. That is the proper process under the APDC bylaw.
So the previous conversation is invalid. This is about the Lunenburg Historical Commission, about buildings outside the APD.
Okay.
And we're proposing this to make it easier for us to facilitate it.
Well, that previous conversation was not voted anyways, Mr. McGrath, but thank you. Okay, anybody, oh, come right down. We're on Article 14, is it? Yeah, demolition.
Dave Blatt, 411 Goodrich. I must say, I didn't think much about this article beforehand, but Mr. Jeffries brought up a point. I just need clarification from Town Council and the selectmen, that if there was a, if there was an article at town meeting that says we wanted to tear a building down, and the town voted to say, "Tear it down," according to this bylaw right now, as was pointed out, is we would then have to also vote to list it with a real estate agent, even though we had no intention of selling it, or no need to sell it, at the same time, because that's to satisfy this bylaw. If, I just want to just make sure that this is not going to be the case, because I know how much difficult it is at these meetings to decide to do one, but to do multiple things at the same time, I think would be impossible. So I just want to get clarification on that.
All right, stay right there.
Sure.
Mr. McGrath has an opinion. Mr. Alonso has an opinion. Council's got the legal opinion. Who's going to speak to this? Somebody?
Chairman Alonso is looking at me, so I think that I am, Mr. Moderator.
Say it again.
I said Chairman Alonso is looking at me, so I think that...
All right.
I'm going to attempt to answer the question through you.
Why we pay the big bucks.
So obviously, it depends upon whether the property at issue is within the APD or not. I presume, in most instances, we're talking about properties owned by the town within the APD. If that's the case, then the APD process, you have sort of an unusual configuration, because you've got two separate bylaws. One cross-references the other, and it doesn't speak with any specificity as to how the logistics work exactly. The APDC bylaw is a much more comprehensive bylaw than the demo delay bylaw. The APDC bylaw says the APDC stands in the shoes, let's say, of the Historical Commission under the demo delay bylaw, but the APDC bylaw provides for its own process and procedure. And as was alluded to by the earlier speaker, there's a process that the APDC performs where if it determines that a property can't be properly altered in accordance with its rules, regulations, the standards in the bylaw, then it will not issue a certificate to alter, and at that point, that decision becomes appealable to court pursuant to the provisions of the bylaw. So that would be the process as it would unfold. If the town wanted to demolish a property located in the APD, and came to town meeting and obtained the appropriate vote of town meeting to proceed, it would need to proceed in accordance with the APDC bylaw. That would mean submitting an application to the APDC, the APDC acting on that application, and if the APDC determined that it could not be demolished, then it would need to appeal that determination to court unless the APDC gave permission.
So that's not what I'm thinking. My thought was that somebody decided to donate a piece of land to us. We decided to tear the building down and build a park, okay? Or build a community area. According to this bylaw, we would have to list that property with the real estate agent before we can demolish, before we can demolish it. So I'm saying, so it's still, if you want to consider it a historic building, but that's, at town meeting, even though it was a historic building, at town meeting, the town meeting decided to tear it down and do something beautiful, you know, different to this thing. It could be seen as this building was falling apart and needed too much repair to make it economically feasible to keep it going. I mean, there's scenarios here, I just see scenarios here, where we're going to be fighting ourselves and going around in circles, where I'm going to end up having to hire a town council to fight, to defend the town against a town entity, mainly the Historical Society. So that's just the only reason why I don't, I needed to, I think it should make sense that if the town votes to do something, that we should do something.
Thank you, Mr. Blatt. Mr. McGrath, it's your article. Come right up.
Now, let me clarify. This does not have to do with buildings in the APD. It has to do with buildings outside the Architectural Preservation District. The town buildings that are historical are in the Architectural Preservation District. So the demolition delay bylaw has nothing to do with it. Again, this is a Historical Commission and not an Architectural Preservation District Commission amendment.
Thank you, Mr. McGrath. I think we're ready to vote on this article, so...
Wait, Mr. Moderator, I have a...
Mr. Frank.
There's something that's been bothering me about this. There's some legislative history that's gone on here. This thing's been kicked around behind the scenes for a while. And this listing, I mean, some kind of amendment is required. Now, we're voting on the article with the amendment. Is that correct?
With the article, with the amendment.
All right. Then I'm okay with it, because, I mean, if you, I just want to clarify something. If you look at Section 1, bona fide reasonable attempts have been made to sell, preserve, move, rehabilitate, or restore, building or structure, or not add. So you don't have to do all those things. You only need to take one of these routes. And if the route you take is preserve, you satisfy the first part of that clause. The listing with the building with a licensed real estate broker is going to be a piece of evidence that does not apply to that route that you've taken. That's why something like this amendment, you know, I, you know, I was, I thought at least an or, some kind of disjunctive, you know, between C and D would do, but this amendment achieves the same purpose. And I just wanted to speak to that point. I'm assuming that the Historical Commission, that this is not going to be enforced in some unreasonable way, that if the route that's chosen is to preserve, that the Historical Commission or the APCD isn't going to require that it be listed, because that just doesn't even apply to that route. So I'm assuming that there's going to be some common sense in the application of these provisions. And that's why I do support the amendment, but again, I hope I'm not taking a leap of faith with that.
Mr. Alonso, you're next.
I just wanted to offer my comments in support of this article. I think that the Historical Commission has done an excellent job, and we've reviewed it with them, several, a couple of our public meetings. And I think it does what it's intending to do, which is, A, clarify what they're trying to do, and B, to strengthen a little bit, not with monetary penalties, but with delay, further delay penalties, in trying to get the town and the buildings in town preserved and restored for the historical record. I think that's an amenable thing. I think when they voted to increase it from, you know, six months to the 540 days, I was in full support of that, and I think this just goes further to do that. I, I don't want to say object. I find that the scenarios that are trying to be put up against, that could delay this in one person's time, that could delay it decades, is just really not reasonable. If the town found itself in this position, we would pass one town meeting article that says we would authorize the select board, let's say, to do everything to comply with Article 131, and that we would have all the rights that we would have need to do this. So it's easy to remedy, and I think it's bringing up scenarios that are unlikely to occur. Meanwhile, I think we should pass this, because I think it protects the history and historical properties of the town.
Are you speaking, Mr. Jeffries?
Yeah, I wanted to just...
All right. We got to give me more than just a half a wave there. You got to give me a hand. There you go. All right. And then I'm going to give Mr. McGrath the last word, and then I'm going to call it for a vote.
Yeah. So we've discussed this article several times, and I want to thank Mr. Levesque. In all of my conversations, I had no idea that we were speaking about property outside of the Architectural Preservation District. I didn't realize that we were talking about land all over town to the exclusion of that. So I want to apologize for any confusion I may have caused related to that. However, you know, in our discussions with the Architectural Preservation District, you know, one of the things that came up was how do you define a building that is a significant structure? Because anything over 75 years is historic, and then it gets into this, what is a, what is a significant building, or what is a building that contributes in a significant way to the town? My concern is in how you define, well, I'm going to ask the question to Mr. McGrath, if that's okay, is by, is the intent that every building over 75 years that this applies to, or is the intent that every building that's been identified as having a contributing value or significant structure over 75 years that this would apply to?
Yeah, it would be an individual case, depending on, I mean, you could have a historical structure that has been so renovated that there's not much there anymore. So we take that into consideration on whether to allow it to go to demo delay. Also, condition, the condition is beyond repair. We've allowed barns, historic bonds that were leaning, and, you know, it just wasn't financially feasible to save such a structure, so we recognize that.
So for clarification, it's every building that's over 75 years in town wherever located?
We're talking about demolition delay amendment?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Outside the district.
So that applies to the vast majority of town?
It applies all over town, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. McGrath, do you need one last word on it, because I'm ready to vote?
Let me clarify.
Go ahead.
There's a lot of talking. Lunenburg Historical Commission proposed this amendment to promote communication between the applicant for demo permit and the commission. By having the applicant submit a bi-monthly report on their progress in meeting the requirements of the bylaw, allows the commission to assure that the applicant is on track to meet their obligation at the end of the delay period. The way it is now, the applicant receives notice that the Historical Commission has voted that the demo delay applies to their property, and that is, and that is often the last communication between the commission and the applicant, until 18 months later, when the delay is up, and the commission reviews whether the applicant has met the criteria of the bylaw. At the completion of the process, we have found contractors that have waited out the delay and demonstrated minimal and suspect effort to comply with the bylaw, and residents who did not understand what they were supposed to do. Both situations causing confusion for the commission on what to do at the point, at that point. This amendment also has language that allows the commission, at its discretion, to approve a demolition before the end of the 18-month delay period. The added language of this amendment allows the commission to better serve the community as facilitators of the demo delay bylaw.
Thank you, Mr. McGrath.
Thank you.
Okay. Oh, I said we were ready to vote, and you're not ready. Come on.
Darrell Plant, 490 Lancaster Ave. I think Mr. Jeffries hit it right on the head. I can't think of a single property in town or structure that's 75 years old that's historically significant. I think of things around 200, 250 years old. 75, that's the problem with this whole thing. Nothing is historically significant that's 75 years old, except for maybe some of the people.
Almost. Thank you. Okay, I think we're ready to vote. This is a majority vote. As amended, Article 14. Those in favor, please raise your card. Okay. And Article 14, those opposed, as amended, raise your card. Clear majority, the article passes. Article 15, Mr. Franco, a protective bylaw. Name change. Maybe that'll be easier. Go ahead.
dash three-point-one, three dash one, three dot, three-point-one, which is a section of the protective bylaw entitled Types of Districts. By deleting the reference to subsection G to the quote, retail commercial district, and substituting, quote, village center district, therefore.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Selectmen, your recommendation?
Recommend approval.
Thank you. Finance?
Finance Committee finds no direct financial impact.
Okay. And where's Mr. Bernie? Did the planning board take a vote, Mr. Bernie?
They did. It was to recommend approval.
Recommend approval, and what, how was the vote? Unanimous?
It was unanimous, yes.
Unanimous, okay. Now, it says Mr. Bernie's going to answer questions, so let's see if anybody's got questions before we delve into a long explanation. I don't see any questions, Mr. Bernie, so just stay right there. So this is a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of this article, please signal by saying, raising your card, rather. All right, and all those opposed, raise their card. Passes unanimously. Congratulations, Mr. Bernie, you won. Okay, Article sixteen, Mr. Dwyer. Go ahead.
Let me just point a far occasion, and I'll be darned if it's all in Article fourteen. So was that a bylaw change? Or was it something? And if the bylaw changed, you could, you could
It's general, not zoning.
Okay, hold on, Mr. Passios. Amendment to a demolition bylaw, I'm told, is a majority vote. Counsel?
Mr. Moderator, are we speaking about the demolition delay bylaw?
Yes.
That's correct. It's a general bylaw, not a zoning bylaw, so it only requires a simple majority vote.
Okay. Is this because we hadn't heard from you, Mr. Passios? You wanted to jump in, I know. It's all right. You're, you're running out of time, so you better jump in. Okay, so we're on Article sixteen, Mr. Dwyer.
I move the town pass over Article sixteen.
All right. Selectmen, what's your recommendation on passing over?
We had not voted
Well, then, give me a second. Somebody second passing over.
So I'd rec, I didn't change the motion regarding passing over this article.
Okay, go ahead. Take a vote, Selectmen.
Anybody want to make a motion to?
Yeah.
Okay, anybody second the motion to pass over?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Dwyer?
Aye.
Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffries?
Aye.
Aye from me.
Okay. Select, uh, Finance, your recommendation?
Finance Committee found no direct financial impact, so I don't think we will take a position on passing over.
Planning Board, did you vote on passing over?
Uh, we did not. Uh, eh, no, we did not.
Okay, because I was told the planning board was recommending passing over.
The, there was a general discussion without a vote.
Okay, so in the future, we need a vote, okay?
Mr. Moderator, which article are we on?
We are on Article sixteen, motion to pass over. Oh, all righty.
No.
Thank you. So we're, we're, the issue is voting, is passing over Article sixteen. So somebody from the moving party, Selectmen, why do you want to pass this over?
I can answer that question, Mr. Moderator.
Go ahead, Mr. Bernie.
Um, the Article sixteen, and this will apply to Article seventeen as well, is for an update to the aquifer protection map in the water supply protection district bylaw. This is in response to the Lunenburg Water District going to DEP to increase their withdrawal permit. As part of that, they created new boundaries, and in that process, DEP requested some additional changes to the bylaw that I was only informed of late last week. So the planning board, in an effort to present a complete article, is hoping to, to pass over this evening and present the totality of those changes in conjunction with the map changes at the annual town meeting in the spring.
We're not ready. I get it. Okay. Thank you. Okay, so I think we're ready to vote on passing over. All those in favor of passing over Article sixteen, raise your card. I know you want to go home. Okay. All those opposed, it's passed over. Article seventeen, Mr. Alonso.
I move that we pass over Article seventeen.
Okay, is there a second? Selectmen, did you take a recommendation on passing over?
We will now.
We will now.
Regarding passing over.
Move to pass over Article seventeen.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Dwyer?
Aye.
Mr. Franco?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffries?
Aye.
Aye from me.
Excellent. Finance?
Finance Committee finds no direct financial impact on this article, and therefore we will not take a position on passing over.
No position, got it. So, Mr. Bernie, wha, what about the planning board? Any vote on passing over?
They did not vote, but as is their article, they
All right, so I'm always going to ask people, if you're going to pass things over, that you've got to take a vote on that. So tell us why you want to pass this one over.
Uh, it's, this map change is directly related to the map change in Article sixteen.
Okay.
So any changes to the aquifer protection district are depicted on the zoning map, which doesn't need to be changed if the district doesn't change.
So they're related, and we're not ready. I get it. Okay, all those in favor of passing over this article, with their cards? Thank you. All those opposed, passes unanimously. We're moving right along to the last article, Mr. Jeffries, Article eighteen.
I move that the town vote to amend the Code of Lunenburg, Section two fifty dash five-point-one, which is a section of the protective bylaw entitled Lot Area, by deleting the reference in the table within subsection B, first column, entitled District, to the retail commercial district, and substituting limited business residential district, therefore.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Select, your recommendation?
Select Board recommends approval.
Finance Committee?
Finance Committee finds no direct financial impact.
Planning Board, did you take a vote on this one?
We did. It was unanimous.
Unanimous, thank you very much. Tell us about the article for, oh, you can answer questions for Mrs. Lantry. Why don't you tell us about the article first? Mrs. Lantry will keep her questions.
Okay, so in the dimensional table in Section five-point-one, there are dimensions outlined for the retail commercial district, which has not existed since two thousand and seventeen. There are no dimensional requirements for the limited business residential, which makes up a substantial portion of Massachusetts Ave from the edge of the Village District to Chase Road. The board has had cause over the past, excuse me, six months or so, to see a number of projects proposed in that area without benefit of any lot size or other dimensional requirement, and they were looking to correct that issue by modifying the dimensional table to include that district that exists.
Okay. Mrs. Lantry?
My only concern, Rebecca Lantry, two fifty-one West Street, Lunenburg. My concern is the change in language from retail commercial to limited business residential. The last time I encountered this was with Whalen Park, and that's where they asked for a mixed-use development and change commercial property into residential. And I am very leery about changing any commercial property into residential.
Okay, so this, this isn't changing anything other than the dimensional requirements. Limited business residential is a zone that is defined and exists, and is defined on our zoning map from the edge of the Village District, along Mass Ave, past Chestnut Street, down to where the Water District offices are now. It exists. It's there. There are uses defined that are permitted in there. It is a mixed-use district. There's a, a smattering of residential and commercial throughout. Retail commercial is a district that was stricken from our zoning bylaws in two thousand and seventeen with the codification of the use table. Retail commercial was a district that existed on approximately three and three-quarter acres of land with no frontage at the corner of Massachusetts Ave and Townsend Harbor Road, behind existing commercial district. So the previous retail commercial was converted to commercial district, and that land is still in that zoning. So we're not changing the zoning of any property. We're defining the dimensional regulations required for minimum lot size, frontage, and lot width within an existing district that is undefined currently.
Anyone else ready to go home? All those in favor of Article eighteen, raise your card. All those opposed, requires two-thirds. It's more than two-thirds.
Move to adjourn.
You don't, you don't need to move to adjourn. We're done. We ended at nine fifty, can't forget. Ten o'clock, right on the nose, Mr. Passios. I said, you said eight-thirty.